...dot gov for more information and to stay up to date with our latest events.
The Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board is celebrating the week of April 17 through April 21 in the lead up to Earth Day. The Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board's mission is to empower individuals in Duncanville through education to take responsibility for enhancing their community. As we head into Earth Day this April 22nd, we would like to share a quick and easy tip to help our environment. Use a reusable water bottle or coffee mug. Every hour, 2.5 million plastic bottles are thrown out. Each year, about 50 million disposable coffee cups end up in landfills. That's a staggering amount of waste. Be kinder to the planet today by using a reusable water bottle or coffee mug. While Earth Day may only come once a year, Keep Duncanville Beautiful hosts many community events throughout the year to show our commitment to our community and the Earth daily. Make sure you follow Keep Duncanville Beautiful on Facebook and visit www.duncanvilltx.gov for more information to stay up to date with our latest events.
The Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board is celebrating the week of April 17 through April 21 in the lead up to Earth Day. The Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board's mission is to empower individuals in Duncanville through education to take responsibility for enhancing their community. As we head into Earth Day this April 22nd, we would like to share a few quick and easy tips to help our environment. Hey, what's up? Yeah, yeah, I'm on the way. Um, yeah, I should be there shortly, but you know what? I think I'm gonna just walk. Um, give me about 15 minutes. All right, I'll see you in a minute. Give your car a break. Whether you're commuting to work or running errands, you just might be able to leave your car at home even for a few times a week, walk, ride a bike, carpool, or take public transportation. You'll save money, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and get more exercise. While Earth Day may only come once a year, Keep Duncanville Beautiful hosts many community events throughout the year to show our commitment to our community and the Earth daily. Make sure you follow Keep Duncanville Beautiful on Facebook and visit www.duncanvilltx.gov for more information to stay up to date with our latest events.
Now therefore, Mayor Elgorn, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, does hereby proclaim April the 27th, 2023 as Earth Day in Duncanville and encourages all business institutions and individuals to celebrate the Earth through one's own action and in the support of the city's ongoing sustainability initiatives.
Join the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board in celebrating Earth Day by following these five tips. Recycle your electronics. Your old, unused, or broken computers, tablets, phones, and other electronics can often be recycled for free by stores, manufacturers, and your local government. This saves natural resources while also reducing pollution.
Hey, what's up? Yeah, yeah, I'm on the way. Um, yeah, I should be there shortly, but you know what? I think I'm gonna just walk. Um, give me about 15 minutes. All right, I'll see you in a minute. Give your car a break. Whether you're commuting to work or running errands, you just might be able to leave your car at home even for a few times a week, walk, ride a bike, carpool, or take public transportation. You'll save money, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and get more exercise.
Pick up five pieces of litter. You may have heard about the swirls of plastic in our oceans. One simple way to help reduce litter, make it into our waterways, is to pick up five pieces of litter on your next walk. Litter cleanup doesn't have to be a big event. If that seems like a drop in the bucket, just reference the following: no act is too little. Eventually, it will add up to a big impact.
Use a reusable water bottle or coffee mug. Every hour, 2.5 million plastic bottles are thrown out. Each year, about 50 million disposable coffee cups end up in landfills. That's a staggering amount of waste. Be kinder to the planet today by using a reusable water bottle or coffee mug.
Get involved in environmental work within your community. The City of Duncanville and the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board often offer opportunities for volunteers to get involved cleaning up parks, making Duncanville neighborhoods beautiful, and other efforts to make our communities greener. Happy Earth Day from the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board!
Hi, I'm Officer Arias, the Crime Prevention Officer here at Duncanville Police Department.
I'm Micah Shaw with the Duncanville Fire Department.
With the growth of social media and the heavy use of smartphones, a dangerous new drug threat has emerged.
That's right, Michelle. Criminal drug networks are using social media to expand their market and reach new clientele. This is now known as a one-stop shop. Drug traffickers have turned smartphones into a one-stop shop to market, sell, buy, and deliver deadly fake prescription pills and other dangerous drugs in just three steps.
It starts off with drug traffickers advertising on social media platforms like Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter, and TikTok.
Most of these advertisements are done and 24-hour stories that are disappearing are posted and later removed.
Posts and stories are often accompanied by known code emojis and sometimes even words.
They then move from the social media post to encrypted messaging using apps such as WhatsApp, Signal, and Telegram.
Drug traffickers typically switch to these encrypted apps to arrange drug deals with prospective buyers.
After a sale is made, drug traffickers request payment using one-click apps such as Venmo, Zelle, Cash App, or even in person.
These drug transactions could cost as little as $10. As a reminder, social media drug trafficking impacts all ages.
However, young adults are particularly vulnerable given their high social media usage.
Remember to stay vigilant and aware of the drug trafficking threats on smartphone apps and social media sites.
Know the dangers of counterfeit pills, their accessibility, availability, and increasing lethality.
When a family member is having an overdose, contact 911 as soon as possible. Both Duncanville Fire and Police carry Narcan and have it readily available if necessary.
In a separate video to better inform our Duncanville parents and community, we will decode the commonly used emoji codes.
The National Weather Service just issued a tornado warning. We've gotta go shelter in place. When sheltering in place, whether at home, at work, or in public, you always want to shelter inside, never shelter outdoors. When sheltering in place, there might be an area with a sign that says "Shelter Area." That means that this area is safe for you to shelter from a tornado. Shelter in a room that is most interior to the building, meaning that there are no windows in the room and none of the walls touch the outside. Once you're in this room, you want to stay here until the tornado threat has passed completely. In order to be extra safe once in your shelter room, the best thing to do is to get low to the ground. So crouch down on the floor. If you're in the back room, the best thing to do is get in the bathtub. Once you're crouched down on the floor, you want to be sure to protect your head. So cover it with your arms if you brought a pillow with you, if you brought a helmet with you, keep your head protected. You also want to have your cell phone with you so that you can keep track on the radar or through emergency alerts so that you're sure once the threat has passed. Today, we're going to talk about how you can prepare for disasters before they strike. The first step is to get your family or your household together and talk about emergency planning. The first step there is to identify all the hazards that we face living here in North Texas. And it's no surprise to anyone that the list is very long. So identify those hazards and talk about how you would respond to all of those. The next thing you want to do is create a family or household communications list. Doesn't have to be a long list. The best thing to do is actually write it on a smaller piece of paper so that once you write down all the contacts you need, you can fold it up and put it in your wallet, in your backpack, or even keep a copy in your car. It's really important to include all the contact numbers, meaning cell phones, for everyone in your household, but also numbers like your insurance companies so that if you cannot use your cell phone for whatever reason after an emergency, you have all those important numbers already written down. The third thing you want to do with your family before a disaster is to build a family emergency kit. This is the kit that you would take to your shelter location in case you're there for a long period of time, or if you had to leave your house in the middle of the night during a disaster. You want stuff in here that will sustain you and your family. So important things that you should put in your kit: water bottles and snacks like granola bars; change of clothing for each person in the household if you have room in your kit; some cash in case you need to use it later; that contact communications list that you put together, keep a copy in there; any important documents that your family needs, copies of insurance, information for your house, for your car, pets, any of that that you want with you, make a copy, put it in your kit; chargers for cell phones. I need glasses, so I keep an extra pair of glasses in my kit as well. If you have pets, also remember that you need to make a kit for your pet to include food, water, copies of their vaccination records, maybe even a toy so that when you leave with your pet during an emergency, you have stuff for them too. North Texas is the most disaster-prone area in the United States, and I don't say that to scare you, but I say that to say that you need to prepare before disaster strikes. So follow all the steps we talked about today and you'll be more prepared for the next one.
We have collaborated with the Duncanville Independent School District. We are going to have a parade for the Duncanville Football Team taking their state championship.
We're currently planning the Duncanville ISD Championship Parade, so the Duncanville High School Football Team won the state championship, which is amazing.
Starting at 7:00 PM on Freeman and Wheatland, then a small ceremony right after in Armstrong Park.
My name is Lauren Sanchez. I'm the Regional Emergency Management Operations Coordinator for the Cities of Cedar Hill, Duncanville, DeSoto, and Lancaster, and I have been in this role actually two years last week.
My name is Noel Garcia, and I'm the Superintendent of both the Senior and Recreation Center here in the City of Duncanville. I've been with the city for, uh, come April will be five years. First, it's someone coming to me with an idea or being the superintendent in charge of special events, picking a day on the calendar, a time, the venue, the location where it's going to be. At that point, we start looking at marketing, advertising pieces that will be used.
A successful parade usually starts a month and a half, two months before the actual event so we can get everybody together to plan. And when I say two months, we typically already have a roadmap of exactly what that parade's gonna look like. For example, when we planned this parade for the Duncanville ISD Championship, we're using the same route that the city used for our Christmas parade.
We look at the different departments that are going to participate as well, especially with the parade.
That includes-
The police department-
Fire-
Streets-
Public Works, our communications team, and others. We also, in this case, invite the ISD so they would send their police chief, their communications team, some others on their staff, or help coordinating the actual event.
We pick a day on the calendar to meet to talk about the logistics of how we're gonna make this happen. So whether it's street closures, whether we're gonna have food vendors, retail vendors, entertainment, uh, we look at security.
To plan for a parade, we start ahead of time. So we'll say for this event. We met a month before, so as soon as we found out that Duncanville ISD won the championship, we got a meeting together when we found out that the city and the ISD were gonna partner to celebrate with a parade and ceremony. So coming to the first meeting, we already have exactly what street closures we need, the route, where people are gonna watch, where they're gonna go to after. So it helps speed up that process. So that still takes about a month to do. I coordinate the planning itself, so I schedule the meetings where everybody gets together to discuss and plan the event. We get everybody in a room, which is actually the room that we're sitting in here. So we all get together and we look through everything: the map of the parade, the exact ceremony, what's gonna happen, how much staffing do we need, where are the barricades gonna go, do we have enough barricades? We make sure we order lighting, everything that we need to make it safe. So we have all of those meetings in person. Uh, after the first meeting, in this case, about a month, three weeks before the actual event, everybody goes back, works on all of that, and then we meet again. So we met, now it'd been two weeks before the event, to make sure everybody's on the same page, is there anything we're missing, go through everything one more time, and then we lead up to the actual event. So at the event, all those people who were involved in the planning meetings are at the event, they're assigned a certain role, so everybody works the event, whether you're coordinating the parade, the ceremony, the safety, the command center, the communications, you're coordinating whatever your role is at the event. We have an amazing event. And then after the event, we all get together, usually a week or two afterwards, the same people in the same room to talk about it. How did it go? What went well? What didn't go well? What could we change for the future to make it an even more successful event for us, who's putting it on, and for those who are coming to enjoy the event? So we call that an after-action. We take down all those notes, and then if we have this event again in the future, we can pull up those notes to make it even better the next time we do it.
I'm glad you're here.
So, I've moved away from this.
I know.
Nice to talk to you.
He wasn't expensive.
All right. All right, we're about to get started here. Got a link call saying the mayor was feeling well tonight, so we'll, uh, I'll pray that he is feeling better to be back. Now we'll do too much damage tonight. We'll see. We're going to dive right into it, hopefully get out of here on time. We have four presentations that are going to be done by staff. So we'll start first with city, enter and city manager rounds of agenda items.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor Patina. If you don't mind, sir, I'd like to just keep you in mind introducing a couple of people.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I want to begin by introducing our new city secretary, Tia Taylor. She comes to us from Grant Curry, company secretary's office, so we're very pleased to have her. I'd also like to introduce our interim finance director, Dennis Bowen, and so we're very pleased to have him as well.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda item four A, and that's just considered a minutes update of your meetings. Kristen and Kaden was able to get us all caught up on the minutes from like this seven previous city council meetings, so we're caught up there. Consider agenda item four B, consider resolution for the property located at six oh nine West Dunderdale Road, Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Described as walnut bin, block eight, block one, ACS four two point four oh one nine, as the Charles lad, excuse me, Charles. And providing for erection and maintenance of signage and providing for the effective day. Council may adopt a procedure for criteria for naming or renaming any municipal building, park, or ranch home by city. The restrictions for the property located at six oh nine West Dunderdale Road, also known as lab property, state that any development on the property shall be named after Charles M. L. And the council agreed at our last meeting to have consideration of this resolution for you tonight.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll review the city calen, city council calendar.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you will look in your packet, uh, we'll go over the August calendar. I have two additions. One is the special meeting with the audit committee, which is set for August the third. That agenda has already been posted and can be reviewed on our website. And also on August fourth, there's a legislative breakfast from seven thirty to nine AM. If there's a table already reserved, if any council members would like to attend that breakfast, please let us know, let Karen know, or myself, or just city secretary. The board and commission interviews on the seventh and eighth at six. And the city manager budget workshop is on the tenth, August the tenth. Our next council meeting on the fifteenth. And also the city council retreat is at eight o'clock on the twenty first.
Excuse me one second, go back to the tenth, do we have a time on that?
The city council budget workshop is set at six.
Thank you.
We also have another special call meeting for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty four budget set for the twenty ninth of August as well. And tentatively, the public hearing on the tax rate on August the twenty fourth. And then we'll go to the September calendar. We do have one more addition that's not on your list that we just got, and that's the TML regional, region thirteen meeting, which will be in Canton on September the fourteenth at six PM. And we'll send out more information regarding that when we, uh, later, later on in the month, we'll send out more information. And just a reminder, the TML conference in Dallas is October the fourth through the sixth. If anyone would like to get registered and attend, please let us know and we'll get that taken care of. Yes?
I was thought that I would like to team.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll ask her, and if anyone else would like to attend, we could, we could go ahead and get registered. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Enter city manager, um, could you explain why at this point the public hearing on the twenty fourth is tentative?
Uh, it is not tentative, it's, it's, uh, it's good.
It is good.
Yes.
All right, uh, with that, we'll get into, uh, item three A, city, update on city manager search and selection. Mr. Brown, you go first.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you again, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have two members of T two professional consulting, we've got, uh, Mike and Micah. And so they're going to provide us with an update on the city manager search, and I think you've got some material that you'd like to pass out.
We do, we do, thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there a clicker that I can use to advance?
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'll step up here, hopefully, Mr. Contreras, I won't put a crack in you. All right, well, welcome, thank you for letting us join you tonight. As we share with you assessment findings as it relates to the city manager benchmark. And we also provide, share with you tonight what the benchmark findings were from your benchmark committee. Now, just to kind of bring everyone up to speed, your benchmark committee consisted of three council members, three staff members, and two citizens. In addition to that, we conducted an organization-wide survey, uh, as well as we interviewed with some of your team members. So we'll share all, uh, information as it pertains to the benchmark, uh, so that you can kind of see what all this work has created. While we're here, you know, we'll kind of recap what we've done, we'll review the city manager job benchmark and assessment findings relating to that. And then we hope to finalize that benchmark, uh, as well as share with you, uh, modify job description as well as recruitment brochure for consideration, uh, to approve, so that we can move forward in the advertisement for this position. Right, so far, here's the work that's been completed. We've completed the assessment, uh, it was qualitative and quantitative, uh, in the survey. It also consisted of interviews, and tonight we're going to present, uh, the findings as it relates to the job profile. We've, uh, created, uh, job posting for the position of city manager. We have, uh, completed our job benchmark, that's what we'll share with you today, uh, and as well as update, and seeking to finalize the job description, uh, so that we can move next, uh, which is the advertisement for the position. And then we'll talk about some next steps toward the end of the presentation.
All right, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, and what, we're going to briefly summarize now kind of that thirty thousand foot level is the work that the benchmark committee did. Really, hats are off to the folks that you selected and that put in the work to do your benchmark committee. As a reminder, the purpose of that committee was to come up with the superior performance attributes for the position of Duncanville city manager. Because your needs are not the same as other cities' needs. And, uh, ultimately, what you can read here on the slide, these are the five summary areas, uh, that came out of a little over a two-hour meeting with the benchmark committee, of everyone going around and providing their feedback as to what they are looking for to exhibit the key success, uh, for your next city manager candidate. So I'm not going to read these out loud, but, uh, you'll also see these reflected in the updated job description that we'll present, uh, a little bit later on. So, uh, when you really boil that down into three broad categories, uh, this, these were the overall results. So we had this big discussion with the, uh, job benchmark committee, and then they also, all members of that committee took what's called a job quiz. And so you have the discussion first, that gets everybody in the same sort of frame of mind, and then each person individually goes through and takes this job quiz, which ultimately identifies, uh, these elements that are on the screen here. And what we're looking at are keys related to their personal skills, their horsepower, things that you might not necessarily see. If you think about a car, this is the stuff that's kind of under the hood, that you don't necessarily see, but something that's very important for the position. And those are ranked in order. So problem-solving ability was, uh, the element that came out on top, followed closely by leadership. And all of these, again, are very important, uh, but those are the, are the key personal skills that the committee came up with, uh, that they really felt like were the most important. Next, you've got motivators, so this is the gas in the tank, if you will, using a car analogy, this is what really drives the person. And, um, here with traditional regulatory, that's basically, you know, making sure that rules are, are followed. Theoretical is the appreciation of professional development, knowledge for knowledge's sake, uh, that kind of thing. It isn't that, you know, folks without these things can't do the job, but how easy it is, uh, for them to engage in, uh, those kinds of behaviors. And then the last is how the person drive, this, these are the things that you can see. And the committee really, uh, felt like that a sense of urgency, really accomplishing goals, um, and making sure that, uh, they were able to, you know, outline a vision and then stay on task to accomplish that was extremely important. The competitive piece there is not competitive in the traditional sense, this is the will to win, and as it applies for the city of Duncanville, the will to win for Duncanville. This is what will ultimately come, so this is an example of a, uh, job, job report, that after we identify your finalists, you approve of those finalists, and we submit them to the TriMetrix. They're going to take this assessment, and it will spit out a report very similar to this, and it's going to show how well that that candidate matches related to the ideal candidate that the job benchmark committee came up with. So, something that's very important, this isn't a pass or fail kind of a thing. So even if, like in this, in this hypothetical example here where someone has a lot of yellows and that's fair compatibility, what that does is that directs us, Mike and I, to really dive in to that person's history and their skills, additional interview questions, to really flesh out and see, was this just an artifact that came up on the assessment? Or does it represent a real gap between that person's ability to perform as Duncanville's next city manager? Or, uh, is, i- is it just an artifact? So this is, this is what is so amazing about the process that we utilize, is it really helps an interviewer to dive in and determine if that fit is proper. So these are the tools that are coming. Okay, so, uh, with the, with the benchmark, ultimately, if you roll everything together, you're looking for a strong ethical leader. Someone who can build teams utilizing, uh, the existing talent that's on board. You want a good steward of resources, uh, someone who is inclusive and a unifier, and somebody that displays a lot of high emotional intelligence. And what you'll see as we move through the presentation, going through our survey data, uh, and the interviews that we collected, you're going to start to see overlaps between those, and those are the pieces that really jump out as we identify who that ideal candidate's going to be.
Thank you, Micah. All right, so the survey findings that we're going to share specifically, um, are associated with creating this job profile for cit, for city manager. We looked at three key areas, the first being leader characteristics. Uh, your team members, your staff, was asked to put themselves in position of a leader. And how did they view certain things, or how would they approach certain things, whether they were a formal leader or not formal leader? And within that, three key areas really came to a light. Number one, all believe that discipline is important. But they also feel that the leaders should use knowledge of people when administering discipline. So that kind of ties back to the EQ component, it's not just, you know, a lot of people throw out EQ and emotional intelligence, but what is that? Well, it's social awareness, it's situational awareness, and it's interpersonal awareness of, uh, people, and that's what they're speaking to. And there is a high, uh, high level of agreement with this. The second area of water, uh, that really stood out was that people are responsible only for themselves, and leaders can't be blamed or take credit for others. Well, as you can see, the vast majority of your staff members disagree with that. And what that tells us is that they're looking for somebody that's going to share in the success and the hardship. That they're wanting a leader that's going to stand in the gap for them, if they make a mistake, they're going to fess up, and they're going to continue, continue to step forward, uh, to try to resolve those issues. And then the third area that, uh, is really exciting is that they're looking for standards. They're looking for standards to be established by their leaders, they're looking for goals to be set, they're looking for that roadmap to be laid out for them. And then those goals are going to help them, it's going to be the vehicle that's going to get them there. They do want goals to be measured, they do want to be held accountable, both in a positive way, but also in a negative way if correction is necessary. So that is really exciting. The second area that we wanted, that we looked at were the team characteristics, so we're talking about how do, do they feel equipped to succeed in their role? How committed are they to the vision and the mission of the city? That's important. How they feel that rewards and recognition is given within their team and the organization. And then lastly, communication, and how effective is it? So as you can see in the responses, you know, about sixty percent of staff members, you know, strongly agree that they receive the training needed to do their jobs effectively. Well, this ties into some other responses that we received about wanting a leader that's going to engage employees, help them grow, help them develop so that they can best serve the ci, the citizens of Duncanville. The commitment to shared vision, this is really exciting. You have a very excited and engaged workforce. They want the best for the city, they want the city to thrive, they want the city, um, the community to thrive, not just survive. You know, uh, as it comes to rewards and recognition, you can see, you know, the vast majority don't agree. Now, this could be, you know, a symptom of, of a few things. The city's gone through a lot of transition. You know, over the last couple of years, you brought in a new CEO, there were changes within the organization, there was restructuring and those things. Anytime change impacts, whether it's good or bad, it's going to impact cohesion. It's kind of, it has a, uh, uh, it has the ability to impact motivation. And when we impact motivation in a negative way, we see a couple of things. We can see performance be impacted, and we can also see work satisfaction impact. So, we've all heard, you know, the phases forming, storming, norming, and performing, right? Well, three of those four stages are highly, uh, uh, conflictual. And they have to be, because we have to go through stages of conflict so that we can identify roles, norms, responsibilities, and start to build cohesion. So when you move from a period of transition and now you're back into a realm of transition, what we don't know about this is, is it perceived or is it real? And that will be incumbent on the leaders to engage with the employees to see that. The last area is morale and stress. And again, this ties back to a lot of the moving pieces and a lot of the changes that the city's gone through. You know, the majority of responses, you know, said that members positively deal with high levels of stress in the organization and competition. But that's only fifty percent of the respondents, the others were either neither, or they disagreed. So that's another thing we see in transition, we see high levels of stress. You can see it play out with people becoming anxious, becoming fearful. You can see, you know, when people hit those stress points, you may see characteristics that otherwise you wouldn't see. So, that's an important point, as well as how they felt, uh, do they feel respected by their chain, chain of command? And the majority of the responses, you know, just under sixty percent, agreed. Again, we don't know if this is a symptom of the change and having new leaders and not having time to develop that interpersonal relationship, or if it's real. But what's important is that you know this, uh, so that, uh, you know, through that engagement piece, it can be addressed. If it is a perception, we correct the perception. If it's reality, then we fix it. We change how we do business. So why is this all important? Well, there are improvement opportunities. Now, this is a word cloud, and my, you know, Micah is great at, uh, defining this, but I'll give you just by laying this. The bigger words, those were the most frequent references, and communication has been referred to a lot. Employees, trust, feedback, you know, and these are in the context of, you know, people wanting to be held accountable. People wanting that feedback on how can I improve? And sometimes we improve when we realize, hey, we didn't do a good job. And somebody sits down with us, and they bring it to our attention, and then they're walking side by side to help us do it better next time. Some of the qualitative survey findings, and these were some statements made, I won't read each and every one of them. But here's a strong one. Leaders must model the way, leaders must also challenge the status quo. We've heard a lot about, uh, wanting to, you know, ignite the innovation and the creativity. You know, there's a lot of team members with a lot of ideas, and, you know, with, and don't really know why they've not shared them, whether it's they feel like they're not going to be heard, or maybe they've been shut down in the past, or maybe it's another reason, but they're wanting a leader that embraces that. You know, the next one, you know, leaders are responsible for execution, completion, and timeline. The team should be able to weigh in as necessary and to be taken into account. The leader should listen and determine the best path forward. All they're asking for is a voice. You know, even if the decision is one that they may not agree with, if we include them in the decision-making process, when, when we can, sometimes we can't, right? But when we can, uh, that goes a long way in building those idiotic secrecy credits, which is the emotional bank account between the leader and the follower. So, from the survey data, we gleaned this. Staff, they're looking for accountability. Staff, they're looking for accountability, both positive and negative. When they do a good job, they wanna be recognized for it. When they don't, they want it brought to their attention and somebody to walk side by side with them to help them get better, to help them improve. They're looking for a transformational leader. You know, uh, a lot of what was described in the one-on-ones was more transactional. Some people described it as corporate leadership style. Whenever we asked them for the traits, what are you talking about? You know, they really described more of a transactional leadership environment, they want a transformational leader. Terms used were servant leadership, situational leaders. You know, but those leaders that touch us inside, uh, to gain consensus, not just compliance, that's what they're looking for. They want someone, uh, who is a communicator, an open communicator, an exhaustive communicator. And you might see that again. And, but at the end of the day, a lot was talked about wanting stability, wanting that direction, wanting those goals. Wanting to see that roadmap laid out so they know where they're going and they know what role they play in getting the city there.
Briefly counsel, the last thing that we did in terms of our assessment is we met with individuals and had conversations with them. This is important because really we conducted this comprehensive assessment to ultimately determine who's gonna be that ideal candidate by checking in three different ways. One with the benchmark committee that the council established, one with comprehensive assessment via survey to all of staff and one with detailed interviews with staff members as well. So, we're looking for where those parallels are and that's what we'll summarize quickly here. These are some sample, uh, interview responses and we've broken them out into four broad areas. So, some of the strengths for Duncanville, strong community engagement. Members from across your departments talked about the importance of interacting with the community, uh, and those strong positive relationships. For some areas for improvement, again, we mentioned communication, uh, earlier. And a lot of staff members mentioning something, uh, that they refer to as selective accountability. Where some individuals may be held accountable but not necessarily others. Some key success, uh, milestones, we want to, you know, reward contributions while also addressing poor or low performance. So, again, that positive and negative accountability. And, uh, some of the key attributes that they're looking for in the next city manager, uh, that professional competent visionary who can also execute. And that goes back to goal setting of establishing that vision, communicating it, but then establishing measurable milestones that we can track our success and see if we're, uh, definitely achieving. So, we see, uh, this commonality between those three major sources of data. This is important, we start to see the congruence, uh, between the two and that's really what stands out as we build things like a modified job description.
So, what this tells us is that we do have a good benchmark. And not just a good benchmark from one perspective, because of the process the city adopted. You're able to hear from your governing, members of your governing body, you're able to hear from members of your staff. And you're able to hear from members of your, of your community working in concert that provided those results. So, thank you for engaging that, uh, process because a lot of times, a lot of cities, they just, members of the governing body are the only ones that sit on the benchmark. And I think, uh, uh, that works for them, but I think when you open it up and you're looking at all of the different components and different elements of the community, you get richer data, you get a different perspective, um, on what people want for your city. Okay, so what's been, uh, provided to you that Micah handed out was, uh, job description that's been modified to reflect some of the superior performance attributes that we, uh, spoke about. But we also went through and we, uh, eliminated some antiquated KSAs, which are knowledge, skills and abilities. Uh, and then we went through again to edit for, uh, you know, grammar, any typos, form, fifth and those things. Uh, anything highlighted in yellow or additions, anything obviously redlined, uh, are recommend- recommendations for deletions. Uh, what we're seeking tonight is, uh, you know, uh, approval on this job description because this will be part of the advertising materials, uh, as we start to promote a position. There's a couple of other questions that are within the job description that we need clarification on. One, is council willing to give, uh, a certain amount of time for the selected candidate to relocate to the city of Duncanville? Uh, because there is a residency requirement. And then second, as it relates to the ICMA credentialing, right now it's listed as a preferred. Do you want to keep that or do you wanna make that more of a mandatory, uh, credentialing under, uh, minute, those minimum requirements? And if you have any questions over the job description, please ask. Not quite yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna stop here and then we'll move to the brochure.
We want an approval on this tonight.
Uh, as quickly as possible because we'll need to push that out with our advertisements.
Guess I hope, I'm not sure as far as the ICMA, you know, what that really means and what that really represents and to have that certification. So, can you provide any insight on that if you recommend we keep that?
Well, it's, right now it's a preference. What, what it is, is a certificate that shows, you know, that they've completed certain programs. Uh, uh, related to the role of ci- of city manager within, you know, school governments. Uh, and I, ICMA is similar to other professional groups, you know, where they establish, you know, what those metrics are, uh, for, uh, attainment of that credential.
Will you provide the, uh, meaning for the acronym ICMA? What is ICMA for those who don't know what ICMA is?
The International City Managers Association. And then you have a state level T, T, yeah.
TCMA?
TCMA, I always get those transposed because I think of TMPA, uh, or TPC.
Mayor counsel, something to consider in terms of, if you, obviously if you make it a required, uh, piece that, that makes your, your gate a little bit narrower. Uh, and it, it could be that you have a person with a master's degree that is credentialed by TCMA but not ICMA yet. Uh, so that, that's just something to, to consider if you do change it from a preferred to a required, it will narrow your, your gates a little bit.
It's more of a demonstration of institutional knowledge base, but based on, uh, your minimum requirements with the education and the years in service as minimum. You know, the assumption can be made if that institutional knowledge exists, uh, for the position. So, right now it's listed as preferred, um, but not mandatory.
So, to, uh, go back to Ms. Gooden's question, uh, you'd like us to decide on this tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does that take a consensus or?
Well, it's just, yes, it would take a consensus. What you may wanna do is look at it, you're gonna need to get on Thursday, turn it Thursday and let Robert get those to them and give you all the time to look at it.
That would be fine, I will share with you that our goal is to try to have the position posted no later than Tuesday of next week. Uh, so, that should work. And we can work through the other weekend to do that. Are there any questions about the proposed modifications?
So, what, what was the requirement for as far as establishing residency? How many months did we give them before?
It wasn't listed, sir.
It wasn't?
I, I don't think we, well, y'all, now we're here, you can tell us whether or not there was a time period.
I, I think we were loose on the time period and the reason why I think we were loose because of the market's so tight. To, to find something is, is not easy.
I think that's true today. Well, we should be able to come up with something by Thursday.
So, what would be a reasonable expectation? Six months, a year, six months, six months.
You have any real estate agents here?
I mean, a year, a year is stretching.
Yeah, I would think six months. Uh, and then encourage the ICMA, uh, serve a period of time after onboard. Some may not view it as beneficial, I do. It strengthens the integrity piece for making people, you know, what's current.
That brings up a question, how long is that process to obtain that certification?
I would need to research that, uh, I've not been through it, uh, so I can't tell you from direct experience.
That might be important on the basis that, um, if we're going to, i- i- if it's too far out, it takes you a year to get that certification, that might be accessible for us, you know. Might be, that's my opinion.
So, right, right now.
You can write it in their contract with their requirement.
Well, okay, that, but that, uh, delays the, the posting.
No, write it in their contract, require it within a specified period of time. If you do select them and they don't have it, just let them know that at some point in time, which is negotiable, that they can get that ICMA. You expect them to attain that if they're chosen. You can write it in their contract, cause you may have created a great candidate, I, someone that didn't join ICMA.
Okay.
Got hired and then they joined and it was a great match, but had that been a pre-record, they would've never found that person.
And ba- and based on the job benchmark and one of those key, uh, drivers is the theoretical, which is you're looking for a person that wants, that engages in continuous improvement. Uh, so, that's not gonna bother people that are motivated by that, uh, or be a showstopper.
Got a question from the city attorney. So, uh, when we say establish residency, does that mean, can you explain exactly what that?
Under the charter, residency means live here, in property ownership.
Doesn't necessarily live here.
In the law, residency, cause it's the same as being a boat.
Well, I, I'm gonna say I think the document looks good. Uh, I don't think we have to specifically have the ICMA and as the city attorney mentioned that, that, you know, we can write that in there. But I don't think we should still have to have it, but overall I think the document looks good, I'd say, say let's go.
So, um, so no ICMA credentials at all?
I think somebody, a candidate would list it as, as part of their thing, but I don't think.
We're not gonna make it a requirement by?
I don't think it needs to be a specific requirement.
Okay, well, not sure what kinda nodding heads I'm getting on that.
I'm, I'm big on certifications.
And continuing.
Cause it just, it just makes you stay current with what's out there. So, I don't think it, I, I think it's like the term said, we should say that, that's something we, we expect them to do within a reasonable amount of time, whatever they, six months or.
So, we'll come back Thursday with, each one of us will determine what we think is a reasonable amount of time.
Well, that would be, that, that would be in the contract.
Yes.
Right, right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that and select it. What you wanna say is it's not required, it's a preference, we expect within, eh, if selected, we would expect them to attain that certification within a reasonable time. And then if they're selected or a candidate to be selected, we can talk about with them what a reasonable time is. Taking on a big new job, so you may wanna give them eighteen months, not a year, you know, so, that's reasonable.
And mayor council, I, uh, some of our members here at the gallery were helpful by pulling up, uh, some information that's helpful. Once you apply for it, if you meet the minimum education and experience requirements, it takes about three and a half months for the process to go through to obtain it. So, it does take a little bit of time, uh, but it re- it depends upon how the person's level of education and their, uh, level of experience for whether or not they're, they're eligible to apply yet. Just hearing something again for consideration, our main request was, do you wanna make this a requirement or do you want to make it a preferred qualification? Uh, making it a preferred qualification from basic on what I'm hearing addresses most of your issues and would allow us not to delay our process.
We don't wanna narrow the pool, we want to be able to have a broad enough net where we can get some good candidates. But for me, it would be something that I would prefer that they obtain within a certain amount of time.
Yes, ma'am. Alright.
I agree.
Great.
So, that, so this is fine as preference for now, but we'll leave us something with the contracts then we can talk about. So, so I would be of dawn then.
Yeah, yeah, and most of those people are gonna be cognizant of what Micah just said. They know what the, what the drill is if they're an upper level manager that's gonna apply for this job.
And most of your professionals, city managers, if they've not yet achieved it, they've, they've probably already been planning to, to achieve it.
It's great networking.
So, it sounds like we've come to consensus. That it be preference and then, uh, when we get down to it, we'll work it out contractually. We got it.
So, are we?
Job description.
Are we moving forward with this job description? Then we're gonna do?
Yes.
Work with Todd to get a clean copy, clean formatting?
I'll be very choice, the mayor will want to play, so we'll get the mayor's from him, we need a copy to send to him.
Yes, we, uh, we do have a copy for the mayor, so do we wanna wait till after your Thursday?
I have a text from the mayor.
Oddly enough.
Would y'all like to hear?
Yes.
Not seeing the job description until just now does not allow council members to adequately review and approve it, need two to three business days.
He's got two.
Takes us back to Thursday.
Well, if you, if you just initial it or make comments and then write your name on it, we can get it to them, not to hold them up, get the mayors and everyone's comments thinking about it.
Okay, alright.
Well, and city attorney, I think overall we have a consensus to begin with.
I'm not gonna change my mind between now and Thursday.
Okay. The person's trying to nominate the mayor, the mayor's input at that point.
The other document that was handed out to you is the draft of the recruitment brochure. Uh, don't pay attention to any of the fonts, uh, that's just a bad print, print job based on my bad settings. The digital copies, uh, look great, but we wanted to try to capture everything that Dunk- that Duncanville was. So, we wanted to highlight, you know, you guys being one of the best Southwest cities, uh, your location and, you know, we're really growing a robust Dallas County uh, population, you know, the achievements of the police department being, uh, accredited police department, uh, your school district and then also your mini parks. And your high controls, uh, so that we can represent that, that mobility. Are there any questions and I don't know if you guys wanna go page by page to provide feedback or input or things that maybe we would like to see highlighted or not mentioned? Uh, so that we can finalize this document as well, uh, for the recruitment.
Mayor Portil, uh, question? Uh, so, two things, just the designer, if we can make sure, I can see the map, it's kinda low resolution, so make sure any of your, your high res. And then, um, I don't know, if you want to highlight the fact that we have a nature preserve now, maybe that's something.
Is there a write-up on the nature preserve, cause that's a fairly new, uh, uh, new initiative? Uh, is there any kinda write-up or anything that you guys might have released to the media regarding that, this release?
Before we answer that question, I wanna go back to the mayor's comment of that, given that we've just received this document. How soon do you need this back, is there any timeline?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we gave you a couple of days, uh, you'd be okay, everybody need some time on it?
Thursday.
I'm looking at it, I like it as it is. Like, um, yeah.
Looks good.
Is this what you generally do for other cities that's comparable to Duncanville?
Right, it, yeah, in the digital format, you know, this, like I said, this is a bad print job, this is just something for you to see what the layout is. But in the digital format, that might, that map really pops. We just need to, uh, it just all comes down to the print settings whenever you print that. So, the intent is, uh, the vast majority of the recruitment's gonna be done digitally. So the intent is, uh, the vast majority of the recruitment's gonna be done digitally, uh, so we really focus on that first. And then we'll refine the, uh, the print aspect ratios, I think is what the tech- technical term is, for the official, uh, for those cases where you may wanna distribute and harden. Hopefully that answered your question.
Alright, so it sounds like, again, we've got a consensus that wanna, that are accepting it as is. Do we have time during the week if someone were to have some other remarks or suggestions to get in touch with you?
Absolutely, yes, yeah. Ma- uh, matter of fact, and I don't know how council might wanna communicate, but if someone could maybe be ascribed list, feedback options. If you could identify the page or maybe even a screenshot of what you're referencing, then that will allow our communications people to go in, make those necessary changes, uh, uh, based on that input. And by all means, if we miss something that's just amazing, that you guys feel is important, please share it, share it with us.
Because we are landowners, we're not doing a whole lot of filming, can we get something in here that's, uh, relative to redevelopment?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll probably put it under the economic development, uh, blur.
That's what I was thinking, I didn't wanna say that.
Yeah, we'll reference.
I don't wanna tell you how to do your job, I'm thinking it.
Like, like mine, like mine.
Okay, so it's been determined that if you have any input, please give, uh, that information over to, uh, interim assistant city manager David Keys, so that he can, uh, put that information together and get it over to you.
And, and lastly, just to, uh, we've answered those questions, to let you guys know, the advertising boards, uh, ICMA, TCMA, TML, GovJobs, obviously the various social media outlets as well as our network is where we plan to, uh, post this. Uh, we'll work with your communications team, we already have been, on making sure that whatever's posted is also cross-posted on the city and Dunkinville website, social media channels, et cetera. Any questions?
I do wanna say that you all did a great job. Just looking through what I can see now, it's looking great, so thank you.
We love to hear that, we love to hear that, and, um, in the notes, Mr. Brown, if you'll just make sure, include redevelopment, uh, just as, as a reminder, uh, because we will, my, my, my memory's not like you said.
We do also have that specifically outlined in the job description as well, that, that aspect. Uh, because that was an important part that came up actually in the benchmark as well, but we'll make sure it's on the brochure.
Uh, one, one final question, uh, question that we have for consideration. If you look on the compensation and benefits page, uh, this, uh, the pay range was based on looking at, uh, compables within this area, also looking at, uh, uh, the past two CMs for, for Dunkinville. Uh, so we'll need firm direction on this pay range, and if you guys want that advertised as part of the, uh, job advertisement.
I don't encourage, uh, putting the pay range out. I'm just saying for my passage carry. And, you know, and then that person, if they bring their game, that's our pay range, then it's discussed at that point. That's my personal reference.
I, I would agree with Ms. Cherry, because I also think if they're interested applicants, they're gonna know what it is.
Good, uh, I guess we could wait till Thursday for council consensus on that as well, about the brochure, at the job description. Alright, any other questions that you guys have, have for us?
Our last piece is the timeline.
Yes. Here's why we're trying to press you. Uh, I know you guys aren't already busy, I know, uh, I saw your calendar, but here's a timeline that, that we're trying to stick to. Uh, so if we, uh, we're hoping to get, uh, the job posted later Tuesday, uh, to receive applications and conduct our initial reviews of mental qualifications, and just a basic internet search on the candidates, uh, and we wanna have that completed by August thirty-first. Uh, we wanna look at, uh, all candidates completing the written and response exercises as part of the vetting, the initial stages of vetting that we shared earlier, uh, I believe last council meeting, by September eighth. Our initial view, interviews with them will be completed by September fifteenth. Uh, and then we would like to move to candidate tri-metrics and follow-up meetings with us. Have that completed by September twenty-second. Present those top candidates to you all, uh, for consideration of interviews, and then, uh, tentatively schedule for the middle of October for candidate interviews with city council. Now, what will make this possible is that we'll be working, doing a lot of these same things concurrent. We're not just gonna run it for thirty days and see what we got, if they go good. Well, actually, as resumes are coming in, they go under review, and the exercises start going out. Uh, in addition, the plan is to brief council at every council meeting. Sometimes it may have to be virtually, uh, but you'll get updates as, as we get to that point where we can share candidate information with you, we will, uh, so that, uh, council can start, uh, to better identify, you know, groups of finalists to move into that tri-metrics phase. In addition to that, you'll be receiving weekly, uh, written update and also a video update. Hopefully, uh, that works for, for you all. We try to keep it simple, try to keep it really succinct, so that we're arming you with as much information during this process to make the best decision as you can. Are there any questions about this timeframe?
Can we get a copy of the schedule?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thank you.
We'll leave copies for the mayor, for the ground.
Okay, so we're gonna move right on to the, um, city manager's fiscal year proposed budget.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Uh, we've got two presentations, and mine is gonna be very, uh, Mayor Protem, so you let me know how you like to proceed. Uh, we may have time to do both.
Okay.
Mayor and council, um, what you have in front of you is your FY twenty-four proposed budget book. Uh, there's a lot of information in this book. Uh, it's two hundred and something plus pages. The very first document that you have is my budget letter to you. Much of what you're going to hear in just a moment is contained in the budget letter. Uh, this is a very, very high-level overview. Uh, we're not going to present a lot of detail to you today. Uh, we have provided you with the budget book so that you will have time to go through the budget book before, uh, our budget workshop, which is scheduled for August the tenth. So the purpose for the budget, uh, when we think about our budget, most people will probably focus on the green section there, the plan, the financial plan that provides an explanation for the financial structure and operations. But most people probably won't pay attention to the other colors. It's a policy. Policy document that provides information about policies, goals, objectives for the year. It's also a guide, it acts as a guide, an operations guide for each department by linking resources to improve work plans. And it also communicates not only to you, but to our public, and it's something that we obviously post to our website. Budget calendar, staff has been working extremely hard for several months preparing this FY twenty-four budget. If you look at July, uh, we just received our certified property appraisals on, uh, July twenty-fifth. And so we had to take those property appraisal numbers and help identify estimated revenues that help us put together a budget. And then the city manager is required to file the budget prior to August first of each year, according to our charter. When you look at, you look at August, uh, obviously, uh, August first is today, so we're introducing the budget, uh, to you. And then we have a proposed budget workshop on August the tenth, where we will talk about the proposed tax rate. Then we have a public hearing on the budget and the tax rate on August the twenty-fourth. And then council will adopt the budget as well as the tax rate on August the twenty-ninth. So budget priorities and strategies and initiatives, we wanted to focus on people. And the first one is internal, competitive salaries and benefits. On August the tenth, we're gonna have a very open and candid conversation about salaries and benefits. I will tell you that we have a lot of vacancies in our city. I will tell you that we need to explore TMRS, um, colas and updated service credits. And then we also wanted to focus on customer service, making sure that we raise the bar and making sure that we provide our citizens with the best customer service we possibly can. We wanna talk about projects. One of the things that we've heard over the past several months is projects that are not complete, so this budget addresses those things. And then we wanna talk about planning, we wanna look into the future. How can we provide the best service we can? How can we strategize for the future? And just a budget snapshot, the tax rate reduction, reducing the average, uh, property tax rate from zero point six five, zero four, six oh, to zero point six four, six zero, three four. So essentially what that means is the tax rate that we're proposing is lower than our current tax rate. What we're proposing to the council is to utilize the voter approval rate. We're gonna talk more about that on August the tenth. The second one, it says increase seniors over sixty-five and disabled home state exemption. The council directed staff to raise that to thirty-five thousand, and that's, that's what we've done. Increase, uh, in water and sewer rates as a part of the five-year rate, uh, increased strategy. Uh, two percent adjustment to residential and commercial garbage rates for CPI increases. Enhanced emphasis on capital improvement project completions, and there are proposed updates to the master schedule. So when you look at this next slide, it's the total revenues and expenditures. And so when you look in your budget book and you look at my, my letter that I have to you, when we talked about the, on the second page, page two, it says governmental funds are classified into fund types. So essentially, that's what this is. We're not just talking about the general fund. We're also talking about pri- pri- proprietary, which is the same thing as our enterprise, special use, and capital replacements. And as you go through your budget letter, at the end of those paragraphs, you're gonna see what's included in those various, those various funds. And then the property taxes. When I spoke earlier about the certified property tax values, this is what I'm referring to. And this number here is in the billions. So this is for the residential property, and this is for commercial business, perp- uh, personal property. And then the city receives only twenty percent, twenty-six percent of citizens' total tax bill. Most people, uh, assume that the majority of their, their property taxes is going to the city, but that's, that's not the case. And so if you look at the dollar bill, it breaks down that the school districts get fifty-one, four percent. The city of Dunkinville is gonna get twenty-six point, uh, two percent, then you got Parkland, you got Dallas County. So this is the general fund, this is our operating fund. The majority of the, um, revenue that comes to the general fund is property taxes, as you know. And then the second, um, highest is our sale taxes, and then the other percentages are identified here below. And then, uh, you've heard this previously, we're a service organization, and so the majority of the expense is salaries and benefits, sixty-three point eight percent. And then contractual services, um, all the contracts that we have, when we talk about our regional partnerships, those contracts, uh, are things that we obviously have to contribute money to. And then last but not least is the expenditure highlights from the general fund. Personnel salary adjustments to reflect the compensation study finding. The total impact was five point four percent increase from the FY twenty-three budget. Two percent decrease in medical insurance rate, and our HR director's gonna talk more about that on August the tenth. And then we have a new part-time position, the emergency management specialist. That is a position that will be paid for by all of the best southwest cities. Uh, the general fund expenditures, nine point two percent increase in contractual services. Our regional partnerships, it's the things that I've just shared with you previously. One-time services by the interim finance director, outsourced vehicle and equipment repairs. And then the second bullet point is twenty-five point eight percent increase in maintenance and repair services. That's, um, Tyler Technologies and Swaget annual maintenance. And then five point five percent increase in supplies and materials. And that increased calls for police and fire uniforms and medical supplies for advanced life support for a fire department. And the utility fund, zero point five percent decrease from FY twenty-three budget. Contractual services are projected to increase, uh, for Dallas Water Utilities, Trinity Water Authority. And our sanitation fund, two point four percent decrease from FY twenty-three budget. And then an increase in, uh, alley capital, um, improvement project support, which is approximately fifty thousand dollars. And the drainage fund, emergency erosion control, CPI, um, capital improvement programs, projects and stormwater management, over a million dollars. And last but not least, economic development fund, this is an eighteen percent increase from FY twenty-three budget. Then investment in revitalizing, uh, the city's shopping centers. And then the new position, which is not gonna be impacted through the general fund as to the economic development corporation. And so, um, that is basically, uh, my presentation, Mayor Protem and council. As I indicated, it's just a very high profile. We're gonna really get into weeds on August the tenth. There's a lot of information in that budget book. I, I'd like to just briefly say thank you to the, the staff. They rolled up their sleeves, they worked very hard, they've done everything that I've asked them to do to prepare the FY twenty-four proposed budget. It is now your budget. It's no longer the city, interim city manager's budget, it's the city council's budget to do whatever you want to with. And again, we're gonna talk very candidly about salaries and benefits, because I think it's really important that if we're gonna stay competitive, we're gonna keep people, we're gonna help address turnover, those are some things that we have to talk about. So thank you, Mayor and council. And if you'd like, I think Mark can get through with his presentation very quickly.
Well, listen to that issue, because we actually have two, don't we? You got, uh, I think you're gonna do one too. Uh, what do y'all think? We're at, right at seven o'clock right now. Wanna give it a few minutes and get these two presentations done? Okay. Alright, let's go.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council, I'm Paul Stevenson, Director of Parks Recreation. Talk to you a little bit about alcohol sales at city events. Back in two thousand fifteen, the city council approved consumption, or sale and consumption of alcohol in city parks with an approved, uh, from the city council. And that was in, uh, reflection of the vice-buv event that they held for a few years called Smoking, Booze, and Barbecue. Two highlights from that ordinance, um, again, it is a special event permit, it goes through the special event permits like all of our other permits go through, with the addition of coming to the council for your approval. Um, it utilizes a, a TABC license entity to sell and serve, that's a requirement. Uh, and then it also requires a Dunkinville police for security presence at each event. And then I would also just note that the events that were held for smoking, booze, and barbecue, I'm not aware of any alcohol-related incidences, uh, related to that. So what we're here to talk about tonight is, uh, is our regular community events. And this kinda goes beyond our big, special, uh, multi-day events, uh, Smoking, Booze, and Barbecue. This is more of our, our regular events, such as the concerts in the park, movies in the park, our upcoming Hispanic Heritage Celebration, uh, next month. Some, some of these events have been struggling, uh, with attendance, so we've been, as a staff, and kinda thinking about how we can improve attendance and some of that feedback we've received from our citizens as they like food and, and drink, uh, at events. And that's something that brings everybody to any event, right? Not just alcohol, but just food and drink in general.
So some of these events have been struggling?
Yes, yes. Con- concerts in the park- Con- concerts in the park, it was usually less than a hundred. Uh, our last movies in the park was ten. So um, it's just, we haven't gotten the traction that we thought we would, uh, some of the events. So we're looking at ways to enhance these events to bring more people to the event. And so food and drinks, what kind of came up uh, to the top. Uh, talking about maybe partnering with some food trucks, getting food trucks out of our events. But the other item is possibly uh, adding beer and wine at some of these events. And so before we go through the, the legwork of going through those, those steps, we want to get your feedback on poss- possibility of adding alcohol to our events. Because if this is something that, something you guys don't wanna do, we're not gonna move forward with it. So this has got very preliminary, we haven't done anything other than put this presentation together to come talk to you about it.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Um, alcohol sales. So how will they be sold? Will it be through vendors, will it be through the food trucks, the sales?
Could be through the food trucks, but most likely it'll be a third-party vendor who we contract with to come in, uh, and sell the beer and wine. Um, and they would have the TABC license, for their liability reasons, it's something we've established, uh, back in two thousand fifteen. Um, we would actually share in some of the profits, so somebody would be coming back to the city. Um, more anything is, is just having that outside party run the alcohol sales.
Consider doing this during movies in the park night for children?
Awesome, well, again, it's all up in the air. We, we, again, we have not put anything as far as a plan together as to what, what event's gonna come forward. Um, as a concert in the park, I'm gonna date myself here, if it was Wiggles or Barney, it's not something we would bring forward for you guys to consider. Okay. Maybe it's been adult-based events, uh, whether it be a jazz festival, jazz event, jazz music, you have some wine. Um, you know, Soto did that a couple of years back. Um, so, things like that. And then Hispanic Heritage Month, I know there's been Hispanic Heritage Month, there's been significant requests for beer and wine from the pocket for that.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're just discussing, just in general. My initial reaction was when I saw it, was, you know, we have a lot of great events, family fun events. I guess from what I've heard, July fourth, uh, Juneteenth, that we do very well, very few incidents, if any incidents. And how we're introducing alcohol that changed that. And then also, uh, you know, I do feel a certain way about uh, the, the logic of saying, well, we're not getting enough people. And sort of give them something to drink, that'll bring them. But after, you know, may- maybe at certain events, maybe if it were by event, we look at each event.
And that would, that would not change. We would still come for you, each event would come back before you. So you'd have an opportunity to, to say, yeah, your name on each event. Um, so if a, a jazz thing was to come across, that's something like, wanna have some wine, that'd be great. We could bring back uh, July fourth, or Juneteenth in four years when it comes back again to Duncanville. Or the Hispanic Heritage Month coming up next month.
I, and I, I agree with Councilmember Coons, kind of what he's saying as well, but one of the things I'm wondering about is we have something like that, we're also saying there needs to be presence, so do we have police, enough police? Do we have enough uh, fire? Do we have anything else for the event?
That is all part of the special event process, but we have had a conversation with our police informant uh, last week. Uh, this was an idea we came up with. I said we've got their support, but they understand that, um, that if this were to come forward, they would certainly support whatever comes forward from the council. So we do have the police officers. I think what we do for our current policy is it's two officers for the first one hundred and additional officer every hundred after that. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. And what I would say to that is, you know, just as the interim city manager mentioned in the, in the previous topic. You know, anything we do, uh, depending on the scale, um, you know, we're gonna need a presence. And we've got to make sure we have staffing to do that responsibly and to support that. And so we've got to be careful on how many events we have because, you know, we're, we're asked to do quite a bit, just as everybody is. But we just gotta be careful. We, we can do whatever this council uh, wants us to do and ask us to do as a city, but just be cognizant of that. Thank you.
Most events we're talking about, we're talking several hundred people at most. Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month may be more than that, but for most events, we're talking about, you know, just a few hundred people at most. So we're talking four or five officers max. So I, I, there's kind of some feedback, is there something that you want us to bring back to you, event by event? Or this is absolutely no, not so, we're not interested at this point?
Say event by event.
Okay, event by event.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, uh, last item, uh, provide guidance, council provide guidance on procuring services to develop a master plan for the nature preserve of the land property, Mr. Coates.
Just, yes, just. Yeah, just, just real briefly, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, this was an item, if, if you recall, I, I sent the council an email on July twenty-first, and basically the email says, uh, "Good morning, uh, Mayor and Council. The deed has required that a professional planner assist with the development of the land site." Site, um, excuse me, "Since we have designated the land site as a nature preserve, staff is recommending that we hire a professional planner to assist in the future development of the property as a nature preserve by adoption of and subject to, partner's twenty-four eighty-five. These steps are based on the following language contained in the um, the deed of gift and donation with restriction." Uh, and it's dated April twenty-second nineteen ninety-eight, and was filed with Dallas County on April the twenty-first nineteen ninety-eight. So essentially what the deed of gift says, it says that the subject property above described shall be professionally master planned prior to any development. So essentially what we were doing was bringing this uh, to the council's attention. We wanted to get direction from council, and I know Councilmember Coons, uh, he's, would like to share some information with you today, and then we'll get direction from Mr. Hager.
So I guess, um, the one question that comes off this, what really be my, was the deed being, talks about development, so uh, you're going out and clearing a trail, does that count as development? Put up a sign, does that count as development? What constitutes development?
Yeah, I think anything that, any human activity to improve the land, make the land ready for its preserve, uh, to deceive guests, figure out where the parking area needs to be, where the points of ingress, egress are. Uh, to put up the, the perimeter fence, all those things, and what those things will look like based on the restrictions that you all put on the property. So, uh, do we have to have handicap, uh, access, special needs on these sites? Uh, they would answer that ADA question. And then we would incorporate that, and then you'd bring it, and approve it, not approve it, and then of course we would fund it somehow, either through tax, uh, funding or from donations from private resources. But it's just an overall, I don't want, I, I didn't want, I talked to Robert, I didn't want him to scare everyone. And it's not, I'm not gonna put up an eighteen-story uh, log cabin, that's not what I'm talking about. But how, how to prepare, and, and part of this is a landscape professional will tell us what to do to prepare the trail. And if they see anything with erosion, how can we protect it at a minimum? And you want minimum interference and kind of give us a game plan so that, one, the, the private citizens that wanna go out and seek private donations to pay for those have something to show, say, this is what we want it to look like, and we've had that professional put their touch on it, and the council's accepted it. Go out and raise some money to make it better.
So, so that, that being said, so in October of last year, so, uh, so Brian Trusty used to work for Audubon, Texas. And so now he works for a firm that's, they, they do preserve and park planning. So October of last year, he had sent me a, a draft proposal of what a master plan might look like for a nature preserve. And so I did forward that to I C M Brown, so, and I talked to him last week. Uh, he said that, that proposal is still on the table, and they're still interested in working with this to develop a master plan. Uh, again, he worked at Audubon, Texas, so he knows what planning a preserve looks like. And he also works with Dunaway, we, we worked extensively in the past. So I don't know if this is something that has to be bid, but.
Normally Elton over here would take the information and would do requests for qualifications. And then bring, we'd bring that back to the council, and the council would select the appropriate person.
So, so we do have a firm that is interested in working with us on that. Again, with his background and work with Dunaway, it seems that might be a good option.
So if the council would just give us direction on how you would like for us to proceed, if, if we proceed forward, as Mr. Hager has indicated, we'll get that process started and uh, move forward.
I think we should follow the advice of the attorney on that and go through a uh, request.
Yeah, get a quest for qualification, certainly, uh, this person somewhat has a leg up, just because they're familiar with the problem. Just negotiate the process when you find the most qualified person.
About how long is that process to at least get, get those requests out?
Thirty, forty-five days.
Okay. Elton, how long do you think you need to, to make that happen?
Have to get the scope, the scope of the project defined. We have a template, so you normally get thirty days on a, on the bidding part of it, to get the solicitations back. So it can be done with easily, easily in a couple of months, once I get the uh, I don't, I don't know how long it takes to get the specifications. It's thirty days out on the marketplace, and then they would respond back with their RFK responses.
Like mid-September, you could probably get something back late September.
So what does everybody think about following that path?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes.
Budget, when will this be available to the public, uh, the proposed budget, like online?
It's, it's my understanding, well, we can put it on there now, but it's not, it's not official. Is it, is it there yet, Jen?
No, we'll have, we'll definitely have it up tomorrow.
And then it'll be on the city's website.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then one other question, just in the spirit of transparency. Uh, the charter states that we would have it prior to August first. Um, can we speak to why we received it tonight, which is August first?
Yes, ma'am. Um, as I read the charter, I, I misinterpreted the charter. Uh, the budget should be prepared and submitted prior to August first, which it was prepared and submitted, but it was submitted to the city secretary as opposed to the council. So please place that blame squarely on my back and not staff.
Okay, we're fifteen minutes out right now, um, and so we will adjourn this portion of, of the briefing session to half, seven fifteen. And we'll, as quick as possible, get into the other room.
Are we ready? Ready to go? Good. Good evening, everyone. I'm sitting in for the mayor, bear with us. Uh, I'm sitting for the mayor, uh, my first, uh, time at Mayor Pro Tem, so bear with me. Uh, I do want to tell you that the mayor is not feeling well. The mayor is not feeling well tonight and, uh, we're, our prayers are with him that he gets back to, uh, feeling better so he can get back to doing what he loves. Thank you. Okay, our first, uh, item is, uh, we are going to do our invocation. And that is going to be done by our former fire chief, Terry Webb. Thank you, sir.
Bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we are so thankful that we have this amazing city of Duncanville. We thank you, Father, for the servants, the ones that sit before us tonight, the ones in the audiences, the ones that work in the streets, work on the sewers. They work doing everything necessary to bring this city the services that they need, the fire, the EMS, the police. We ask, Father, that you guide them, protect them, so that they can serve this city in a manner that's what be a privilege to you. Father, we thank you so much for the peaceful time that we have tonight to come together and hear this council. May this council make decisions tonight and in the future that will improve this amazing city of Duncanville. Father, we thank you for their service. We thank you for your love and your guidance and may this council continue to look to you. Cause with you and our, and our guidance, as our guidance, mistakes will be few. All these things we ask in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, now join me in the salute to our national flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable citizens, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, strong state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, I'm going to be skipping, uh, mayor's report tonight. It's enough to just be sitting in the chair. I don't have much to report on. However, uh, I will move to the council member reports. Okay, I have one, uh, request from Councilwoman Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, I would like to recognize Kristen Downs. I know she's probably on vacation tonight. Um, well deserved. I would like to recognize her for the job well done that she performed as city secretary, interim city secretary. And while also performing her duties at the police department. Um, she stepped in at the time, right as I was coming into office and during that time I was very nervous. And she told me and reassured me that she believed that I can do the job and I would be okay and to calm down and she just welcomed me with warm arms and I appreciated that. Also during her time, I noticed that she was able to catch up on the backlog of requests, open records requests that was submitted. And she also took care of our agenda, um, our minutes. As you can see on the agenda tonight, there are a number of minutes that were still outstanding since April. And as she was serving as her main role in the police department, she also brought us up to date as city secretary here at the same time doing dual roles. For me as a city employee, I know how hard that is and to be with us throughout the night of council meeting nights and that's a very high demand. I just want to recognize her for the hard work that she did and for her professionalism. And just thank you, Kristen, and I hope you are enjoying your vacation.
Thank you. Do you want to do another introduction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chief Brown.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and council, uh, for the opportunity just to update you on some things this evening. Uh, first, uh, our new city secretary is here with us this evening, tonight, Ms. Kia Taylor. Uh, is her first evening with us today and she comes to us after serving many years in the city of Grand Prairie in the secretary's office. So let's give her a round of applause and welcome her to the city. Pickleball and open play volleyball continues to grow in popularity at the recreation center. Pickleball is now offered in the mornings and evenings and volleyball is offered on Friday evenings. Both activities are free to members and only five dollars with a day pass. The deputy fire marshal has completed his inspector one, two, and plan examiner classes and passed the hands-on skill test. These are important steps in getting a second person certified in the fire marshal's office. And then last but not least, Pave Con estimated that substantial completion of the Daniel Dale Reconstruction Project with all lanes open to traffic will take place on August the eighth. And I'd like to say to the public, thank you very much for your patience. We understand the frustration. We know that this project, uh, has not been completed on time, but we are hopeful that this final date that we're sharing with you today is the last day that you'll have to put up with that traffic. So thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to, uh, there are no proclamations tonight, so we'll move on to, uh, citizens' input. In-person citi- citizen comments will be heard during the regular session in keeping with the city council's rules and procedure adopted on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Electronic mail comments will no longer be read aloud. Paper copies will be provided to the city council at the dais. The comments will be made part of the public records in the minutes. Pursuant to section five-five-one dash zero-zero-seven of the Texas government code, any member of the public has the opportunity to, to address the city council concerning any matter of the public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the council from deliberating any issues not in the public, not on the public agenda. And such non-agenda issues may be referred to the city staff for research and any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. At this time, two-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. To address the council, please submit the fully completed request card to the city secretary prior to the beginning of the citizens' input portion of the council meeting. In accordance with the Texas Opens Meeting Act, the city council cannot discuss issues raised or make any decisions at this time. Issues may be referred to city staff to research and possible future action. And with that, um, with the exception of just a few of these cards, uh, most of them do pertain to, the requests pertain to, uh, budget items, or I'm sorry, agenda items. And as such, we will take those comments during those public hearings or prior to the public hearings on each one of those particular agenda items. I have a couple here that I'll start with, um, first one being, uh, Tanya Benson. Ms. Benson, could you state your name and address?
My name is Tangia Benson. Um, my address is eight, one, three, Link Drive, Duncanville, seven, five, one, one, six.
Thank you.
Um, I'm here to advocate for the senior citizens in the recreation, uh, center. There is a plan to renovate it, to expand it, uh, this year, the end of this year. I had a chance to view it and, um, it's really not helping the senior citizens at all. On the other side that they're opening up, they're making it all, uh, weight, a weight room. And that's more for the, uh, younger men and there are some women that, that lift weights. But we have some senior citizens that go there Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And I like to go there to socialize with them, entertain, cause I'm a geriatric nurse of forty years. And I'm an advocate for them. But, um, there's, they're saying, the supervisor and Borat is saying that they're gonna take those cardiovascular machines out and, and get new ones, but they're gonna get the same amount that they have, which we need more in there or just add to what we have. Because on yesterday, um, the supervisor bypassed me, went to the senior citizens. A lady in her seventies, her husband is in his eighties, and they were outside leaving. Standing out there and supervisor came, went out there in that hot sun at three-thirty and said to them that, uh, they're asking that they, um, be on the machines only thirty minutes because he's gotten some complaints that they, uh, are being on the lower bikes over thirty minutes and there are other people that, uh, need them. That's not true because there's not many people use those lower bikes. I'd be in that gym, in that recreation center fitness room for two hours and I, I observe, I'm very observant. Uh, I did not like the fact that he had them out there in that sun. He could have addressed that to them inside. He bypassed me. He didn't say anything to me about it. He said, he, he told them that he was going to, um, tell everybody. But while I was in there, he had talked to another s- senior citizen outside the door of the fitness room and said, told him the same thing. Still not saying anything to me because he knew I was, wasn't gonna be agreeable to that. You know, I, I was gonna let him know that that is not true. Those, they don't, um, they don't be on those bikes that long and they're, they look forward to that. He said that they were gonna take those bikes to the senior citizen, um, center. And that to me is seclusion. We enjoy sitting there in front of that window and when, uh, say for instance, one of the men come, I said, here, here comes Mr. Terry. You know, I mean, and one day, one of the, uh, ladies, it was two cars out there, one like her car, she went to the wrong car. So the next day when she came, I told her, I said, uh, you went to the wrong car yesterday. I was watching you. And you know, we just, we communicate like that. We socialize with each other. We enjoy each other. But I don't think they should take that from, from them. Um, add more of the, um, cardiovascular, especially the lower bikes. And then he said, he told them that he was gonna tell everybody that they have thirty minutes. I shared with him a plan that would work better for that. If they were on there for thirty minutes and they went up and they told them, then they could, uh, the, the staff could let them know that they have their thirty minutes and to, um, you know. But I would ask that you all please review the plan and, um, try to revise it to make it better for even the senior citizens.
Thank you. Okay, Mark Graham. Name and address, please.
Mark Graham, four-ten Santa Fe Trail. I know the lad is probably gonna have to be master plan, at least that's what I hear. I just want to please consider who you choose. Um, I would like to email you all and I will do it tonight. Uh, the plan that was done for Tandy Hills in Fort Worth, it's incredibly detailed. It involves things like we've been doing, a small group that's been literally, uh, identifying every species that lives down there. That, that is a master plan for a nature preserve. And we need to make sure that whoever you choose understands that it's not just about the land, it's about accommodating the species that are on the land also. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe, uh, the rest of the cards that I'm looking at, uh, all pertain to public hearings that we're gonna have, so, uh, well, I, I take that back. Terry Webb.
Mayor Gregg. Good to say that. Counsel, Chief Brown, thank you for the time. Terry Webb, one-one-seven-zero-eight Cannon Road, forty-nine East Scurry, Texas. Former fifty-year citizen of Duncanville and a former thirty-four-year veteran of the Duncanville Fire Department, retired as chief in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and eight, the city had to make a decision at that time because times were kind of tough. The colas were no longer gonna be available to retirees. That was in two thousand and eight. Fully intended, at some time they would be able to put those back in place. We're in twenty twenty-three, fifteen years later. Nothing's been done. We had one raise as retirees. And I speak for over two hundred retirees for the citizens of Duncanville. Men and women who dedicated their time and stayed here. You talk about keeping people here in Duncanville, we need to give them a reason to stay. We have to give them a reason to stay. You may not be able to compete with that salary down the road, but those benefits are certainly important for those who stay. I know you have a budget meeting coming up and I ask that you seriously consider cost of living raises and updated service credits for your employees. Your employees care. They are hardworking men and women. Please consider them at that, at that upcoming budget program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jack Long.
Jack Long, my address is one-three-two-two-zero Woodhaven Drive, Farmers Branch, Texas, seven-five-two-three-four. Is that council member Contreras? Uh, now, uh, I knew him a little differently. I, I am the, uh, former chief of police of, uh, Duncanville. I worked here for thirty-one years and I lived in the city for those thirty-one years and I'm kind of coattailing off of what fire chief, former fire chief Terry Webb said. But counsel, I just encourage you to really look at the cola, the cost of living adjustment for retirees. Those men and women, they do all of their jobs thinking in the, their best interest and their family's best interest. When I get ready to retire, I'm gonna have something to look forward to. Uh, COVID has taken its toll on us all. Uh, this past year with a nine percent cost of living really hit hard. And, uh, again, I'm, I'm talking about the two-hundred-and-eighty-one retirees. If you stop and really think about some of those, and I knew, I knew a lot of them that have retired. Think of the one that goes out in the hundred-and-ten degree heat like today. Takes that hot tar, pours it on the pothole in the street and then puts the asphalt on top of that and you do that for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. They certainly deserve to continue with that cola. It's, it's something that our families really rely on and, and in my situation, when, when I retired, my TMRS uh, option that I selected, my wife will receive that cola or that, that, uh, benefit from, from, uh, my pension when I retire. And, uh, I want to make sure that when I go to that faraway place in the sky, that I'm gonna make sure that they're well taken care of, uh, when I'm gone. So once again, please, uh, think about the cola for this retirees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've, uh, reached the end of our citizen input that is not pertaining to agenda items. So with that, we'll move into the consent agenda. We'll have the city secretary read the consent agenda. We'll have the city secretary read the consent agenda.
Okay, until the minutes for the date, here, the city council regularly, April fourth, twenty twenty-three, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, April eighteenth, May second, May sixteenth, June twentieth, July sixth, and July eighteenth. Consider a resolution for the property located at six oh nine West Dannyville Road, Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas, described as Walnut Bean Block A, Lot One, AC E, four two point four one nine, as the Charles F. Land Nature Preserve, and providing for direction and maintenance of signage, and providing for inspection.
Do we have a motion for item four A?
I'll motion.
I'm making the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, first and second. With that, let's go ahead and vote. Whoop, what happened? My light's off. All right. All right, thank you. The motion passes. Okay, item four B, which has been read regarding the lad property. Do we have any? So we're going down, down each one? Well, we're still doing this one, though. So both, both ones. Okay, so we're starting a new bit. Okay. Apologize for that, folks. Items for individual consideration. First item, A, five A, is going to be presented by senior planner Nathan Warren.
Thank you, Mayor Brotem, counsel. Next item is a text amendment to add and define the land-use temporary workforce housing to the comprehensive zoning ordinance. The definition, the proposed definition for temporary workforce housing is a residential unit offered for rental to guests for residential purposes for a period of more than thirty nights, but less than six months. Such rentals may include a shared room, a single room, or the entire dwelling unit. These uses are conducted by the homeowner or tenant, not by a hotel or other business. The proposed permitted districts are SF forty-three, SF thirteen, SF ten, and SF seven, all with a specific use permit. This is what the permitted use chart would look like, being the temporary workforce housing showing SUPs in SF forty-three through SF seven. Additionally, staff is proposing additional regulations, that the applicant must obtain a temporary workforce housing permit from the city, provide proof of ownership of the residence, that the applicant must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the city planner that the unit and property do not have any outstanding issues related to taxes, or building, electrical, plumbing, fire, health, housing, police, planning, noise, or code enforcement provisions. That the applicant must submit a report to the city planner annually that indicates the following: the number of nights the unit was rented as a temporary workforce housing in the previous year, proof of payment of hotel occupancy tax submitted to the city in accordance with chapter eighteen, article two of the city's code ordinances, proof of current property insurance, and then if the applicant has failed to meet one of these requirements, the city shall provide ten calendar days of notice to comply. City retains the right to suspend or remove a property from the registry. Once a property has been removed from the registry, the property shall not be added to the registry for at least one year. Suspension or removal shall be at the discretion of the city planner for reasons including but not limited to the following: the applicant has given false or misleading information during the application process, there has been a violation of any of the terms, conditions, or restrictions of this subsection, the applicant has failed to pay the hotel occupancy tax in timely manner, or the location has received three complaints from neighboring property owners for excessive noise or traffic within a twenty-four-month period. And finally, continued operation of temporary workforce housing following suspension or removal from the registry shall be considered a violation of the zoning ordinance. Pursuant to section six point zero two D of the comprehensive zoning ordinance, the time and place of the public hearing was published in the newspaper. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this item by a vote of four to one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at this point. A total of ten minutes will be provided for all individuals wishing to speak in favor, and a total of ten minutes will be provided for all individuals who wish to speak in opposition. All right, so do we have a time on the public hearing? Okay, thank you. Need a motion for a public hearing? Okay, do we have any individuals here that want to speak in favor of this proposal? Any want to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, I would ask if there's any want to speak in opposition to it. No one here to speak in opposition. Okay, with that, would move to close the public hearing?
Make the motion. So moved.
Motion, Mr. McNabb. Second, Mr. Veracruz. Vote on closing the public hearing. Motion, whoop, we missed one. Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously to close the public hearing. Okay, any council discussion at this point? Ms. Gooden?
Thank you, Mayor Brotem. So I saw in the application or the packet that there were about three who are interested in having this for our city. Is that correct? Did I read that correctly? It was about three interested parties in having this type of ordinance created?
That's correct.
That's correct. How will we, who would be responsible for the inspections and making sure they are in compliance and staying in compliance, and how would we regulate it?
So it would be very similar to our current short-term rental registration process. In fact, a lot of the language that is proposed mirrors the short-term rental registration process. So city staff, it would be incumbent on city staff to monitor and maintain this program.
So when we say city staff, we're meaning code enforcement or neighborhood services? Are we meaning the fire department, building inspections? Have we identified what specific division would be responsible for?
So it would be a team effort. In part, it would be planning department with the initial intake of the, of the, of the application. Obviously, they would have to go through the specific use permit process, so there's an initial stop there, and then there's initial registration and, and maintenance. But also, yes, if, if they, if, if there's incidences where the neighbor, neighbors would be calling in, depending on whether it's noise or the nature of the incident, it would be either code or, which is neighborhood services or police.
Is this something that we can take on as far as additional work onto our workload, being that we're already, I would assume, stretched? Can we afford to take on additional items to go and inspect?
So it would be a case-by-case basis for each, on each individual basis. Really, the goal is to accommodate those who are wishing to go beyond the thirty days in less than, in less than six months, giving them a category that they could operate under. So it would be an extension of short-term, short-term rental in that, in that respect.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I do have a question, and it kind of ties into what Ms. Gooden brought up, and that's simply that, I believe I know what we're trying to accomplish here, and I think that's a good thing, but I want to make sure we're not overlooking abuses that could occur in the future. While there's only three right now, you said, that are applying for this or interested, that's good. But I think as more people read through this, I want to make sure that we've covered the idea that someone could come in and, is there a possibility they could circumvent the boarding house ordinance and actually create more of a boarding house than what this is intended
I think that'd be difficult to do, especially with the, with the way that this ordinance or this is presented with the specific use permit process of coming in on a case-by-case basis. If it were permitted by right, I think that that would be a different story, but given the nature of, of the, the built-in parameters, the additional regulations, and I think that, I think that is a minimal risk.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up to that is, again, something you discussed in responding to Ms. Gooden. I trust that we have a follow-up system or a monitoring system to make sure, again, that one of these homes doesn't get in the process seemingly complying, and then eventually turn this into, I know they've got an annual report they have to file, but how are we monitoring them five years down the road? What's the best way to make sure we're catching someone if they've actually turned it into a group, a group home?
So there would be inspection, an inspection process, that, an annual inspection, and an annual inspection fee that would have to be assessed as well. So there, there's gonna be constant monitoring of the, those who are, are able to apply and successfully take advantage of the temporary workforce use. So there will be an opportunity for, for monitoring and inspection on an annual basis.
And I have to correct myself here, I said group home, I meant boarding house, but you answered the question, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Coontz.
Thank you, Mayor Brotem. So this will be, you know, based on receiving, being approved for an SUP. Is there a certain term that the SUP would last, or would it be just until, as long as, you know, for example, if the property changed ownership, would the SUP still be on there? So what would the term be like?
So that, that would be determined at the, at the point of inception. So planning and zoning commission could recommend a time limit, a sunset on, on the SUP, as could this, this body. Could also recommend time limits on, on the SUP, so that's an additional benefit of being a specific use permit.
Okay. And then, again, I think this is kind of like the questions that have already been asked, but as far as, I guess, the enforcement, I'm still not sure about, so this is temporary workforce housing, so for temporary, temporary work assignment or contract to attend, or to attend vocational or occupational training, right? So in theory, that people who'd be using, staying in these properties would be either working somewhere or going to school somewhere temporarily, right? And so how can we enforce that? And how do we know if people aren't just staying there for, for, it's just a long-term rental?
So to answer your question, the intent is for, say, a traveling nurse, or like you mentioned, someone who is working on a temporary basis. However, the way that the code is written, it is on a temporal basis. It is, like you, like you say, between thirty and thirty nights and six months. So that is the, that's the, the teeth that's, that's built in. It's not necessarily, we're going to make you prove out that you have a pay stub and that you're, you're working in the area or so many miles to, to the residents.
So in other words, we wouldn't be able to prove whether or not people staying in the house are actually temporary workforce or just staying there?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Cherry Brown.
Thanks. Being a traveler in healthcare for up to ten years, I think it is great to have that option. I'm not one that sleeps very well in a hotel when I'm, you know, when I'm working for an extended time at a facility, and so I, I think it's good. And typically, we'll have a contract that says that we're at that place for X amount of time, so it, it's not, I mean, it's not hard to ask for a contract if that's what our, our focus is, that we're trying to provide temporary whatever. And even with, if it's school, I'm sure there's a semester to semester of whatever, so I, I think it's a great concept, and I think it's, would be easy enough to have a guideline if we set it like that.
Thank you. Okay, no further lights on, so with that, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motioned by...
Second.
Okay, motion by Mac Burnett and second by Cherry Brown. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, the motion passes with Mr. Coontz and Ms. Gooden voting in opposition to the motion. Okay, next item, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance as heretofore mentioned, by amending the code of ordinances, by amending appendix A, article three, section three point zero three, residential uses, accessory and residential uses, to add the land use temporary, oh, I'm sorry, I'm back on the item we just came off of, apologize. Item B, conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding the request of Juan Trejo applicant to include a specific use permit for school, business, trade, vocational, and adopt an ordinance to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map on the main commons block three, lots one A, ACS zero point six one seven, more commonly known as one thirty-four North Main Street, City of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Senior Planner Warren presents this item.
Thank you, Mayor Brotem, counsel. The request is to obtain a specific use permit to allow operation of a barber college. The definition of school, business, trade, or vocational is a business organized to operate for profit and offering instruction and training in a service or art such as a secretarial school, barber college, beauty school, or commercial art school. The future land use map designates this property as Opportunity Area Ten, being the downtown district. The zoning district is downtown Duncanville District, general Main Street frontage. The image on the left is an aerial of the subject property. Image on the right is a zoning map showing the downtown district with a number of specific use permits in the, in the general area. This is a image showing the, the suite being some four thousand square feet. Here's an image looking at the, at the subject property, and an image across Main Street. This is down looking north at the property, and then to the south. Some considerations in our comprehensive zoning ordinance... Some considerations in our comprehensive zoning ordinance pertaining to specific use permits is that the proposed use is consistent and compatible with the adjacent land use and zoning. That's consistent with the architecture and characteristics of the adjacent properties. That the proposed use may promote innovative use and modern development concepts without having an adverse impact on adjacent properties. That it's consistent with the goals and objectives of the city. That it is an enhancement or improvement beyond the minimum standards set forth by the zoning ordinance. That the proposed use will not be a detriment to the general health, safety, and welfare of the community. That the proposed use would stabilize and improve the, uh, property values within the city. That the proposed use would protect and enhance the city's attractiveness to residents, businesses, tourists, and visitors. And that the proposed use would strengthen and help diversify the economy of the city at large. This is a, a map showing, uh, that eight mailings were sent out. We had one response in favor and one response in opposition. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this item by a vote of four to zero with one in, uh, abst- abst- one, uh, member abstained. Thank you.
Okay, so at that, we're going to overlook, open the public hearing. And, uh, we will, um, hear from the folks that have signed up to speak on this issue. Again, um, you have two minutes to speak, it will be on a timer, when you hear, hear the timer go off, um, then please, uh, allow time for the next person. Uh, Christopher... Oh, all right, I cut you off, you got ten minutes, um, for, for each, for, in favor or in opposition. Okay, so, um, there's a lot of them here, so if, if you find that someone has, uh, already expressed an opinion similar to what you're gonna express, you still, uh, I'd still encourage you to get up and speak, but, uh, just, uh, take heed that it, that maybe those comments have already been made. So with that, Christopher Escobedo.
Hello, how ya doing?
Good.
Hello, I'm Chris, um, I'm a proud graduate of Texas Fades Barber College.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Escobedo, I forgot to ask you for your address.
Oh, my address is eighteen thirty Red Cloud Drive, Dallas, Texas, seven five two one seven.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm a proud graduate of Texas Fades Barber College, currently working at two twelve North Main Street, uh, Texas Barber, Barber Shop. What drew me into this college was an exceptional quality of education. Uh, despite having a nearby barber shop, a barber school in Pleasant Grove, I chose Texas Fades because not only the area is appealing, but it also felt like home. Uh, during my time at the college, uh, I wish we had more accessible shops around us such as coffee shops, burger places, restaurants, and other attractions. However, I could see in Mr. Juan's vision, and I firmly believe that considering this change would be fantastic, uh, a fantastic move for the city of Duncanville. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Somebody with a last name, somebody with the last name starting S C H A? Yes, I'm, I apologize for that. Your name and address, please?
That's no problem. Uh, my name's Brian Scobie, I live at ten twenty-two Florence, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six. Um, and I'm here on behalf of, um, my peer, my friend, and a fellow, uh, business, um, excuse me, um, fellow gentleman that's opened up a couple businesses here in Duncanville. I've seen J.C. gather toys for food drives, I've seen him send eighteen-wheelers full, full of food and water to hurricane victims. Um, I've also, I can speak to his passion for his trade. I've seen him not only change his own life, but many others that are somewhere here and some are not. Um, I've seen him teach a skill in light of passion under young minds here in Duncanville. I've, I've, I grew up here in Duncanville, I graduated from Duncanville High School in two thousand and six. We did not have businesses that would come by and talk to the kids at our high school. And right after high school, you're in a really impressionable phase where you can either take off and you can learn a trade, you can go to a community college, you can go to a university. Um, and then you have a select few that, um, that don't, and they could have if someone was there to, to influence them, to show them that there's a, there's another way. You know, not all, not all people can, you know, attend a university or college, um, that's, that's in their town or maybe requires travel. Well, this is right here in our hometown where we can influence the minds, grab a hold of these young kids right out of high school, eighteen years old. I mean, I've worked on Main Street, my sister's worked on Main Street, and we're just running out of businesses that cater into our community. Um, you know, Ben Franklin, you know, that, that place is, that at Duncanville for years, and they're gonna close their doors. They're gonna close their doors, not this month, maybe next, or maybe this month, but they're leaving. I mean, the whole family's gonna, you know, just shut down. So I'd encourage you not only to look at the business that's going in here, but, um, but the individual that's gonna be behind the business. You know, what are they gonna, what are they gonna pour in? You know, it's our community, it's gonna be the same as what we'd get out of like a Starbucks or a Jamba Juice? Or are we actually gonna, you know, get some change that is gonna count? So I'd just encourage you to take a look at the, the character and the passion of the next business that we select for that location.
Good, thank you. Angelica Perez? Name and address, please?
Angelica Perez, uh, twelve ten South Main Street. Good evening, my name is Angelica, I am the administrator for Texas Fades Barber College. Our institute currently enrolls students who are either graduates from Duncanville High School or still in high school. While we also welcome students from areas like Red Oak, Waxahachie, Midlothian, Anis, Grand Perry, and Arlington, many of them have never been to Duncanville before. However, once they see our college, they are amazed by what it has to offer. We are considering to move to a more walkable and attractive location within Duncanville's downtown area. This move would only, will not only benefit our students, but also provide opportunities for better interactions with local businesses. We believe that this transforma- transformation could be just what Duncanville downtown needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Xander Alvarez?
My address is right, my address? Eleven twenty-three Oreo Boulevard. Hello, I'm Xander Alvarez, I'm a student at Duncanville High School, and I'm also enrolled in barber school at Texas Fades. Going to school feels like my second home, where I not only learn hair cutting skills, but also develop crucial people skills, making me a better person overall. I'm thrilled about my future as a finished high school and venture into the world with a valuable craft that can help pay for my college education. I'm genuinely grateful for the opportunity to attend the school in my hometown Duncanville, and I'm eagerly looking forward to witnessing the development of the new school, creating more champions in our city. After all, we are the city of champions. Thank you for ta- thank you for taking the time to listen, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose De La Cruz? I can't see him.
Jose De La Cruz, residing at two ten West Fame Street, Duncanville, Texas. Um, I'm here on behalf of Texas Fades Barber College. I represent Texas Fades Barber College, and we believe that the new location proposed by Mr. Trejo will greatly, will greatly benefit us as students. It will allow us to experience the process of a new development and understand what it takes to make it successful. We are eager to become the future and new generation of this establishment. Thank you for your time, and let's work together for the growth in Duncanville.
Thank you. Thank you. Ruby Pineda?
Hello, my name is Ruby Pineda, and, um, live on four four six East Magnolia Lane, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven. Um, my name is Ruby Pineda, and I'm fifteen years old, and I was raised here in Duncanville. I'm currently a student in Duncanville High School. Since I was young, I've always known I wanted to become a barber. In middle school, I even did a project where I showcased my dream career, and I chose Texas Fades Barber College as a subject to demonstrate the process of becoming a barber. I went as far as creating a whole business plan for my project. As soon as I turned fifteen, I approached my parents with a, with a request to enroll me in barber college, and thankfully, they agreed. I absolutely love attending this school, and as, it is not only teaching, uh, it does not only teach me valuable barbering skills, but also helps me with social skills, which I have also had a hard time with at school. Now I find myself standing here delivering a speech to show everyone how remarkable this school is and how I will greatly benefit our community. Thank you for your time.
Derek Mendoza?
Good evening, my name is Derek, I live at seventy-four oh two Elderberry Lane, Dallas, Texas, seven five two four nine. Uh, I've been living in Duncanville pretty much my whole life, I'm a fellow graduate of Duncanville High School. Currently, I'm enrolled in, in barber school, taking a chance to pursue my dream of becoming a barber. I wholeheartedly believe that just like I'm taking a chance, Duncanville should also take opportunities to grow and flourish. Having lived here most of my life, I've noticed that there are only a few business establishments in our, in our town. I strongly feel that Duncanville needs to embrace change and support local ventures to bring vibrancy and prosperity to the community. I'm particularly, I'm particularly advocating for Mr. Trejo to be given an opportunity. I'm confident that if you grant him today, he will thrive and succeed, supporting initiatives and can, and can truly make a positive difference in Duncanville. Thank you for taking your time to listen to my thoughts and ideas, together we can make a difference in our town's growth and become successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we still have a couple of speakers, but at this point, I'd like to, uh, request, I don't think that I explained, uh, uh, the time limitation being a total of ten minutes for the people speaking in favor. And so with that, uh, because I didn't explain that thoroughly, and I don't wanna leave anybody out, we only have two more cards, uh, in favor. Um, so I'd ask the council if we could give, uh, uh, five more minutes so that the last two speakers can get in? Will that be enough time if we got that? Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second? Okay, a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote. Okay, unanimous, thank you, council. Okay, we're gonna reset the clock. Uh, next is, uh, Christian Rivera.
Hello, my name is, uh, Christian Rivera, I'm a resident at six five three Parkwood Circle, seven five one one six. When I first entered barber college, I had no idea how to cut hair, but my time there was transformative. Not only did I learn the art of cutting hair, but also thanks to the guidance of J.C., I gained valuable knowledge on becoming an entrepreneur. J.C. went above and beyond by not only teaching me how to use the clippers and shears, but also showing me how to start, maintain, and grow a successful business. He taught me about building a credit score, inspired me to start my own LLC, and provided me valuable advice on saving, managing, and investing my money. This experience has been life-changing, especially as I transitioned directly from high school. It has not only set me on a great path, but also influenced some of my friends from high school to join the barbering program as well. Expanding the barbering program, oh, sorry, expanding the barber school in downtown Duncanville would be incredibly beneficial as it would allow so many more people to not only learn the art of cutting hair, but also gain the essential entrepreneurial skills. This education can truly empower individuals and help them succeed in their personal and professional lives. Thank you for considering the importance of this ex, uh, of this expansion, and I hope to see many more individuals benefit from such a valuable educational opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan Trejo?
Good evening. My name's Juan Trejo, and I'm the owner and instructor at Texas Fades Barber College. I'd like to take a moment to share some information about our establishments. We are a trade school that focuses on the training of future entrepreneurs. The, in the barber industry, our primary focus is not on teaching hair cutting skills, but also imparting business knowledges. Currently, we're in the process of expanding our business and buying a new location. The new location will offer our students convenience access to other nearby, uh, businesses such as Mud Ha- Mud Hook, Roma's, Ride Spot, and a coffee shop. This will create a vibrant environment for our students to learn and engage with the local community. Regarding the parking issue, the majority of our students either get dropped off, carpool, or find parking spaces as needed. Fortunately, we have reached an agreement with Main Stations, Main Station, which will allow our students to park there as well. We believe this agreement will address any potential parking concerns effi- efficiently. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out, and I'm here to answer any questions. Also, I have brought the floor plan, site plan, I don't know if you guys got it? But at the end of it, we also, we do have the agreement with, uh, Main Station. And also, we have, uh, pictures where it shows where there's enough parking during the day, all day. And it also shows, uh, the expansion and the, the way it's gonna look after it's painted, and the signage and everything. So if you guys glance through there, you guys will see that it's gonna be a beautiful building and a great attraction for Duncanville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Protim, uh, can you include the handout as part of the record, the city secretary?
Yes. City Secretary, did you catch that? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, we're done with those that are in favor, I believe? Is there anyone else? Uh, did I have a card on you? You turned a card in? Okay, I thi- do we have time left? Okay, come on. Name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Marion Johnson, uh, reside at four twenty-three Blue Ridge Drive, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven. Uh, good afternoon, city council, I'm a Duncanville resident. Starting my barber journey at the young age of fourteen, I didn't know how to go about my passion given the fact that I didn't have any guidance on the career path I wanted to travel on. On the career prayer at Duncanville High School, I came across the Texas Fades booth and finally came across a man with the same passion as me. I felt comfortable and thankfully, I was blessed enough with the opportunity to attend Texas Fades Barber projects at the age of sixteen. And now I'm a seventeen-year-old licensed barber at Faded Barber Shop located at four oh five East Faded, four oh five East Kent Wisdom Road in Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six. I am now entering my senior year at Duncanville High School as a licensed barber and in position to help my single mother raise my little sister and on track to follow my own dreams to open up my own barber school one day. I owe everything to God and Texas Fades Barber Academy that are changing lives one student at a time. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. Okay, um, I think that's the end of, uh, the folks that are in favor, so with that, I'll ask, uh, Ms. Emily Bridges, come up?
Good evening. Yeah, I think you're supposed to say in opposition.
Right, we're, we're now in the opposition phase.
Okay, Emily Bridges, four one eight Oleander, seven five one three seven. Those were beautiful testimonies that were just said, I mean, and it's wonderful, it sounds like you're doing a wonderful job with what you're doing. And it's, this is not aimed at anything in that nature. As for Main Street, I don't think that this is what is needed on Main Street. I think we have other buildings in Duncanville where this would absolutely be a great fit. But on Main Street, I think we're trying to continue our Destination Duncanville Comprehensive Plan, and I don't think that this fits in within it. But when I look up there and I see, um, the considerations for the property, it's absolutely consistent and compatible with what we have on Main Street currently. Because if you go up and down Main Street, we have sixteen different hair service places. And that is a lot, and that is only on Main, and that's not considering what's on Santa Fe Trail, Cedar Ridge Road, or any other area in Duncanville. So I love what he's doing, I don't think it's a good fit on Main Street, and I'll end it there, thank you.
Anyone else to speak it up? Well, it's a public hearing, so you can, you can speak.
Yes, I'm Mary Mesa. And I live at two oh six North Hastings, Duncanville, Texas. And I have lived there all my whole life in Duncanville. J.C., I have, I have yet to see J.C., this is the first time I've ever seen him. He's had his barber shop up there, I went over to talk to him about a problem I had with a dumpster. I left messages with him, he never returned a message. This is the first time I ever got to see J.C. I never knew what he looked like, but... I never knew what he looked like, but going on from here. The Barber College, like I said, we have enough barber college beauty shops on Main Street. We want it to be local retail to draw people from outside Dunkinville here and make it a place where you want to go and visit, not to see a row of barber shops, and that's what it's becoming. The vision that I was told that there were a lot supposed to be limited on barber shops and when they redeveloped Main Street, well, it didn't turn out that way. And enough is enough. I know it is a school, and I would like to also say, how much tax dollars is this going to bring into Dunkinville? I don't think they pay any taxes. And we need something to bring people down there, to bring money in to Dunkinville and to make it a great city that it can be. I don't oppose a barber college, but not in that location. I think there's shopping center locations that would be ideal for it. And also, you're going to have a problem with parking. How can you tell people where to park? Who's going to regulate that? Yeah, you say that, but then they, they're going to park the closest they can, and it's been shown that time after time. So I urge you, do what's right for Dunkinville. Make it the great city it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition?
My name's Teresa Bryant. I own the property at two twenty North Main. I have just one question. There's a lot of pot smoking going on. Is that going to be continued? There's a couple of the perpetrators in the audience. I don't want to smell it. We have an ordinance. They sit along the ledge of Texas Fades. They come down to the little bench in front of my building. I don't want to smell it. I don't smoke cigarettes. I don't smoke pot. So is that going to continue with more barbers on Main? That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition to the request? No one else to speak in opposition? With that, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman.
Second.
Mac Burnett. Second by Councilman Coontz. Let's vote. Okay, motion to close the public hearing is unanimous in favor. Okay, I've got a light on from Councilman Vera Cruz.
Thank you, sir. So a few things. One is I'm one hundred percent behind this school, and let me tell you why. So I met Mr. J.C. some time ago. It's been several years. We're doing a career day at Dunkinville High School. And got to know him and actually went and visited and let one of his students cut my hair. And did an awesome job, but one thing that I really was impressed with was not only is he their instructor, he's a coach and mentor. He's helping them through high school. A lot of the students are still in high school. And you know how important it is to have a coach and a mentor like that. Not only that, he's teaching them entrepreneur skills. Teaching them how to talk about business, customer service, how to talk to a customer once you go into the thing. So in my heart, he's changing lives. He's changing the trajectory of not only the students, but their families, which speaks to my heart, but what really got me, I went in there the other day and he had his daughter there. And he's teaching her not only how to cut hair, but the same things, how to be an entrepreneur and how to survive, and that, that speaks to me because that's exactly what I'm doing with my daughter. So I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cherry Brown?
Question for you. Thank you. Do we have any other barber colleges in Dunkinville?
Um, I know that Texas Fades currently operates in Dunkinville. I think it would be embarrassing for me to say I don't know at this structure, but that would be an honest answer. There are several barber shops in Dunkinville, several along Main Street as well. I can't speak to the number of barber colleges, however.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. So I too had the opportunity of coming by your shop and looking at the, a lot of you I saw. And I was very happy with what I saw as far as professionalism, proud of what you're doing. And looking at the demographics, the age group in Dunkinville, you know, I, not everybody wants to go to college. Not everybody can afford to go to college. And so being able to provide the community with a higher living wage that they actually take ownership and proudness of. I'm anything for, I'm all for anything that encourages and powers, inspires our youth. So, thank you.
Councilman Coontz.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Maybe I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Warren. And I want to make sure that I'm speaking to, so I don't know the applicant personally, but everything I've heard about the applicant has been ve- very, everything I've heard has been good. I'll say that. But I want to speak to the use of school, trade school vocation, because this is about this use at this location. And again, everything I've heard about the college, I've looked it up, everything that looks like something that we definitely want in Dunkinville, and we want to support in Dunkinville. And so, but I do want to speak to this particular land use, this property. So the, who's the applicant on this?
The applicant is Mr.
It is Mr. Trejo, right?
Yes.
Does he own the property?
No, the, 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 um, the property owner is, I believe it's Monty Anderson and Options Realty.
Okay, so he's applying for an S U P on a property that he doesn't own yet.
I don't believe he owns it currently.
Okay. I'm not sure how that, that works with zoning, but.
I think the applicant, if I may, the applicant may speak more about, about his, his desire or plans in the future on that property.
Well, that's fine, because again, in city attorney, again, I don't know how this worth is zoning, but as far as applying for an S U P on a property that you don't own.
The owner, you would have to get permission of the owner to make the application.
And so, I'm sure he's gotten permission.
Yeah.
So, all right, and so, and I know we're talking about, again, this use, school, business, trade, vocational. Because we keep hearing about beauty salons and nail salons and barber shops and that sort of thing. The use there is personal care, correct? So this is a different use that we're talking about, however. Y'all will be giving haircuts there. Well, can I ask him to come up? So you will be providing haircuts as a service, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how is it, how would the college be funded?
How would the college be funded?
Yes, sir.
What do you mean, for the students or for the?
Well, to operations, you got to maintain the building, so how are you be funding the college itself?
Tuition from the students, what they, they do probably pay.
Okay.
So from the tuitions, that's how it would be funded.
Okay. People will be able to get haircuts there, though. So you will be providing that, that service?
During the educational time, where we do demos to demonstrate how to do a certain haircut.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, it is educational school, but there's also a service of personal care being provided. So, and I know I'm going to start sounding like a broken record on this, because, but this doesn't have anything to do with this applicant or what he's trying to do with his business. This has to do with land use, in particular downtown Dunkinville, and that this happens to be in my district. And we have not, in the last couple of years, had any discussion about the vision for downtown Dunkinville and what we want that to look like, no discussions whatsoever about any kind of businesses that we would like to see there. And currently, as it stands with our comprehensive plan, that this use, just business school, trade school, doesn't fit the comp plan, and again, as a representative of that district, that my constituents in that district would not support this use. And so that, you know, that's all I have to say for now. I may have more comments later.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions. Very impressed about y'all's comments up here. I learned a lot about, about the organization today, which I didn't know before, so thank you for that. So what our belief is right now is that this is a, going to be a lease situation with a potential to buy the building at some point?
Yes, I think, I believe the intent is for the applicant to purchase the building.
Okay, and going from a lease to a purchase, the, and I think I know the answer, the special use permit, if allowed, goes with the property, correct? So when it transfers over, if it does transfer over, in terms of ownership, nothing changes. And I saw something early on in one of the first presentations on this issue. There was a number of years for this, associated with this special use permit. Is that right?
Yes, I believe that that was one of the initial requests of the Planning and Zoning Commission was to have the S U P for a number of years, ten years. Ultimately, that motion, I believe, failed and that it was ta, the item was tabled to a subsequent P and Z meeting. And then at the latest P and Z meeting, I don't believe that particular language moved forward.
So there's no, there's no, I don't want to call it a limit, but for lack of a better word, there's no limitations on this, the S U P.
That's correct.
Terms of years. I also share, Councilman Coontz wishes to see, and I wish the timing was different so that we would have a better idea of what, what the future of the downtown Dunkinville District, or Main Street District, whatever we want to call it, what the vision is. And, you know, I've never been enamored with the initial downtown Dunkinville District ordinance that was brought to us. I've said this to others, it was a boilerplate from a city that had a lot more money than us, and it never fit. And so I was hoping by now, but I understand, given our circumstance over the last few years, why we haven't been able to focus on this. But the, that vision has to come to be. We have to, we have to create a vision that's realistic for Dunkinville and grow off of that. My concerns when we give special use permits like this is that we kind of lose control, because if, if a year from now we come up with a great program that is going to inspire people to bring in retail and bring in restaurants and the things that we would hope we could get one day, I'm just not real excited about locking up a prime space with a service-oriented business. I mean, it's not a gas station, it's not a repair shop, it's not any of those things that I wouldn't want to see for sure, but it still gives me some pause for concern. So I'll go ahead and let anybody else speak that has anything else to add. Councilman Good, Councilwoman Good.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Let me start by saying I understand the value of barber colleges. I am a graduate of a beauty school when I was in high school. I was raised by cosmetologists, and a lot of the women in my family are cosmetologists, so I get it. I came by and I met you at your facility. I think you're doing a remarkable job. What you're putting into the community, I wouldn't want to risk it going somewhere else. I value what you're doing. I am of the mindset of trying to figure out what is our vision for Dunkinville. I've said it all along. And I've even brought it up for our staff retreat, that we discuss what it is that we want to see here in Dunkinville. It's not in any way a knock on what is going on with you and what you're doing in our community and what you're doing with the students. It's remarkable, outstanding. I just wonder, is this the prime spot for it as well in downtown? And I voiced that when I met you this past weekend. I don't want it to sound like I'm knocking you. That's not what it is. It's just that we haven't determined where we're going as a city, and I believe that should be our priority. And what is the best and highest use of our current properties that we have and the limited space that we're working with. But, well done. Thank you so much, and hopefully we can, you know, find something that will be a win-win.
Before I go to Councilman Mac Burnett, Ms. Cherry, is your light still on? Okay.
Back on. You know, it's interesting, we keep saying we have this downtown plan, which we do. And we keep saying we don't know what we're going to do, we don't want to tie something up, but we have a great opportunity to utilize that and to do something good here. And so it kind of sad to me that we keep saying, I don't want to tie something up, but I don't know what we doing, so we need to figure out what we doing.
Thank you. Councilman Mac Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Mr. Trejo, I feel quite along the same lines as Ms. Gooden in this issue. I think the work that you do is valuable and something that I would like to see in this community, but I just, again, just don't feel it's the highest and best use of what we're trying to do. Thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? Any questions?
So, thank you again. What are our options? We either vote in favor or against, or is there an option to table for another time once we discuss what it is that we would like to see with downtown? What is, what are our solutions? What are our options, I should say, right now?
You have the ability to table the matter, but I don't like to table because of the public hearing and the notice and because it's zoning, that probably shouldn't be over six weeks. So that's not a long-term solution for you. It's just a short-term solution that we generally employ if we need more information from an applicant or from staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And as you know, I like a motion to approve, and it would require a majority instead of a motion to deny, because we've only got six of you tonight, so this could end up in a tie. It would at least have, if it's tied, then the motion fails.
Councilman Vera Cruz?
Thank you, sir. So Mr. Gus Garcia, do we have people knocking down the door in that area? If that's okay if I ask him there, Mr. City Manager? Just curious about that.
Gus Garcia, Managing Director Development Services. Mr. Vera Cruz, with regard to the term knocking down the door, I would say no, we don't have businesses knocking down the door to move into our Main Street District.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Councilman Coontz?
This is my last comment, and again, we don't, this isn't obviously a discussion about the comp plan of the downtown district. But as far as why and.
But as far as why and what do we do to change that, I believe that's, you know, a conversation that needs to be had so that we can make decisions like this more clearly. And no, and I, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Cherry is, again, past couple of years, we have not had any discussion about what, what our vision is for downtown. And we do have that plan from two thousand eight and then from two thousand seventeen. Uh, but th- this council has, at least since I've been on there, has not had that discussion. And I just feel very strongly, we need to know where we're going so that we have, we can make confident decisions that we're headed toward a goal. And, and I wanna say once again that this is, uh, what Mr. Trejo's doing in his business and everything that he's doing with the students, is that we want this and we wanna support this. But the use in downtown Duncanville, it's not, it's not consistent with the use, uses that we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion to approve by Councilman McBurnett, uh, second by Councilman Vera Cruz. The vote?
Do, make sure that people know how they're supposed to vote, please.
I'm gonna defer to you, cause I always get confused with this.
Green, it's a motion to approve, green, yes, red, no. And you need at least a majority for it to pass. If it doesn't receive four votes, then it fails.
Okay, does everybody get?
If you don't get, if it's three-three, the motion fails, cause it doesn't receive a majority.
Okay, with that, go ahead and vote. The motion fails?
Motion failed.
Four-two?
Two-four. The, technically, it's a motion to approve. It fails two to four.
Two to four. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem? I'd, I'd like to say to Mr. Trejo to continue to please work with Mr. Warren and Mr. Garcia and Cruz. Thank you.
Okay, we on item C? Yeah, okay. All right, uh, item, uh, four, four C, five, five C, apologize. Conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding the request of Nobdeep Doll, Dollawal. Applicant and owner for a zoning change from C, Commercial District, to I, Industrial District, and adopt an ordinance to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map on block three, lot four, Woodhaven, more commonly known as fourteen-fourteen North Main Street in the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Uh, this, uh, senior planner, Warren, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, counsel. The request is a zoning change to allow the operation of industrial land uses on the subject property, being fourteen-fourteen North Main Street. The future land use map designation is retail-commercial, the current zoning district is commercial, the proposed zoning district is industrial. The image on the left is an aerial showing the subject property. Image on the right is a zoning map showing, uh, commercial zoning district, uh, north of Woodhaven, rather, on either side of North Haven, uh, east of Redbird, and industrial, uh, district, uh, west of Redbird. This is a image of the subject property. This is the industrial property across, uh, of North Main Street. This is an image of, uh, down North Main Street to the, uh, south and to the north. Thirteen mailings were sent out. We received zero responses in favor and zero responses in opposition to this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of four to one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Make sure I don't have anything. Okay, so I don't see, uh, anyone on cards that, well, I do actually. To speak in, well, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, um, we don't need a motion, right? Okay, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And with that, um, I will ask for, um, Vipul Raval to come up and speak. Please give your name and address.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vipul Raval. I live in five-one-two-nine San Gabriel Avenue, Colville, Texas. I'm here to speak, uh, on behalf of the owner, Nobdeep Dollawal. Uh, thank you for letting me come in. This property, as you see, it's a very narrow property. It has very small frontage.
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry for interrupting. Can you raise the mic or get closer to the mic, please?
Sorry, yeah. So this property is, uh, on Main Street, but it's a very narrow and long property. The frontage on Main Street is very small. I'm a real estate broker, uh, for the last sixteen years, and I have done research, uh, on available properties. If you look on any website, correct, you look at CoStar, for a light industrial property, very few available in market. Uh, Duncanville has none, Dallas also has very few. So therefore, the owners wanted to see if this can be converted from commercial to light industrial. And that will attract more smaller industries, smaller wholesalers, uh, assemblies to come to this location as tenants. And that will also bring more employees, that will bring jobs here and also bring businesses to the neighboring restaurants and C-stores, et cetera. So there is no loss to anything. Nobody is losing anything. If it's zoned from commercial to industrial, it's, it will only benefit. And I always, uh, in everything I do, I strive to see if there is a win-win. It's a win-win for everybody. City also benefits, landlord also benefits, and nobody loses anything if we change it from commercial to light industrial. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here if you had, anybody has any questions?
Well, we'll, uh, we'll see, and we'll call you back up if so. Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody else to speak in favor of this item? No one to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition to this request? I see no one indicating they're in opposition to this request. So I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman McBurnett.
Second.
Second by Councilman, Councilwoman Gooden. And we'll vote to close the public hearing. Okay, it's motion passed unanimously to close the public hearing. Okay, uh, discussion. Uh, Councilman Coontz.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. What's, uh, I couldn't tell on the application, wh- where is the, the applicant or the property owner? Where do they reside? I can't tell what city that is. Or whoever can answer the question, yeah?
So the owner is a, a doctor, uh, and he lives in Vegas, Las Vegas. And he's ha- he has a family here in Borlison, uh, and he's also a doctor. And he's definitely planning to move down here. Everybody wants to come to Texas. So he wants to come here and therefore they are trying to buy properties here. In fact, another thing I forgot to mention is he's also looking to see if he can buy properties surrounding this little piece. So that will make it more attractive. And if it, that also can be zoned light industrial, then it will become a nice little park for light industrial businesses to come to Duncanville.
Okay, thank you. And then, my understanding is that, so the, the reason why he's applying to, uh, to change the use or the zoning is because he wants to expand so that, uh, so he can get more people that might be interested in the property, right?
Correct. And we can attract more businesses, small industries, to come and open their business here.
So as it stands, he, he wouldn't know exactly what kind of business that might be, uh, as far, as far as?
Light industrial mostly is small industries or wholesalers, or after the COVID, a lot of, uh, this, uh, distribution network has started. So people who will be distributing, uh, for online businesses and all that. So this will be basically small industries and distributors.
And then, my next question might be for the city planner, so, because I keep hearing light industrial and on the application, it's just, it just says industrial, so there must be some difference between light industrial and heavy industrial?
Uh, actually, no. So there, uh, uh, I believe I put this in the, in the case report. When the, uh, the new, uh, CZO was enacted, there was a, uh, C-one and C-two and then, uh, L-one and L-two. And this was kind of on the, on the borderline. This was C-two between, uh, more intensive commercial and less intense industrial. When the new CZO was enacted, there's only commercial and only industrial. So it was one or the other, and it got downgraded to commercial and, uh, the other industrial uses, uh, were kind of eng- engulfed into, oh, uh, the industrial one, industrial two were, were engulfed into, uh, each other. So, um, this particular property, uh, had the misfortune of being downgraded to commercial, whereas the other properties perhaps to the south were, uh, continued to operate as industrial. Across, uh, Redbird were industrial as well. So the, the nature of, of this request is to, uh, become industrial, which would open up to all industrial uses.
Okay, I appreciate that. So that, that makes more sense. And I had one other question on the slides, uh, where it shows the property and then it shows the surrounding, cause there's a couple of SUPs right there. So if I recall correctly, to the northeast, that's a daycare. And we approved an SUP for daycare.
That's right.
There for childcare. So, um, and then, but I'm, I'm not sure what the one is down to the southwest.
So that was, it's currently a church, uh, so the specific use permit, uh, is, it's currently Commercial District. So that's, uh, that SUP is, is no longer oper- oper- operating.
So, uh, a- and, you know, th- these will be similar comments to previously. But right now, this is kind of a, sort of a hodgepodge. Uh, we've got a, uh, daycare, there's an SUP for religious church. If you look at the picture, you see all the cars there. You, you know, Greg, this is your district, so you, you know more about this. But there are cars everywhere, um, and now we're gonna have industrial, so it is a hodgepodge. However, you know, you're explaining that it's basically going to be upgraded to what some of the other properties around it are already industrial. Um, and so, um, it, again, you know, I'll make the point that this might be another area where we need to look at what do we want this area to look like. It's starting to get kinda spotty with the zoning. Um, however, since the other uses in the area and the zoning, it actually reflects what he's requi- requesting. Um, I'm gonna be in support of this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Gooden.
Thank you. Um, so the property owner lives in Las Vegas. How often does he have a chance to come down to monitor and, um, oversee the property and the maintenance and?
So I'm the property manager for him, and he comes here almost, uh, every fifteen days or so.
Every fifteen days?
Yes, he, his father used to live here. He recently lost him. But, uh, his brother lives here and he's here very often. And I'm the property manager for him, so I'm there almost, uh, you know, every week to take a look, so.
Okay, so, um, the building is rather long. I was driving out there yesterday to take a look at the area. And I did notice that it does seem to be, um, heavy industrial area. Is he planning on breaking up the building and dividing it into different parcels to have smaller? Cause I know industrial has a very wide range. You can have manufacturers, you can have, um, freight, you can have, um, little small manufacturing companies, but that still fall under industrial. What type, how does he plan on using the building? Keeping it one whole building and having one tenant, or are we talking about dividing it up and having multiple tenants?
Correct. So the previous owners, uh, had, this property has, is a fifteen thousand square foot property. Divided into twelve units of twelve fifty each. And so these are all shutters with one, uh, high ceilings and, uh, so there are twelve, there are actually eleven tenants there. Uh, one tenant has two units. So, uh, basically, he, what we want to do is that, uh, see if we can clean up this place once it gets the light industrial zoning. Then we can attract more better tenants. And if the tenant is a big national, uh, manufacturer or someone, or he wants to open a small distribution, we can give him the whole thing, or we can give him three units. It's, each unit has individual shutters. So we, if somebody wants two of them or three of them, we can, it's flexible. We can either give them two units, three units, four, and that's what we wanna do. And if, we also want to take the land next to it, if possible, which is our empty lot. And, uh, we'll be able to provide, uh, more, uh, space for the tenants who will probably come here and open some shops or wholesale or distribution.
Okay, cause what's currently there now have, they have a ton of cars, vehicles. So all of that will be, you're saying, will be cleaned up?
That's, that's the plan, that if we get light industrial zoning and we can get better tenants, then we'll let these old people go and bring nicer people. And that cars and everything that you see there, nobody wants it.
So you'll let their lease run out?
Yes.
And do we know what's the longest lease currently right now?
Most of them are loo- uh, ending next year, twenty twenty-four.
So one of the leases, the longest lease is anticipated to end next year?
Next, yeah.
What time in next year?
I think so sometime, um, April, twenty twenty-four.
So by April, we can expect to see?
We cannot force them, but obviously, we don't want to encourage them. So, uh, uh, as, as soon as possible, we would like them to go redo the place and attract better tenants here, especially. And if possible, just one or two big tenants. And I know, uh, because of my.
Mayor Protem.
Background.
Yes, sir.
This is a Q and A portion. Public hearing is closed, so the council needs to ask questions, he needs to answer them, and when he's answered them, then he's done, cause public hearing's over.
Okay.
So the question is, the question on the floor was, are you going to subdivide it? He said yes, maybe, no.
Depends on who wants to come in and how much space they want, but yes, we are willing to subdivide.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions. How long has the current owner owned the building? Okay, so.
Twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Describe to me a little bit about what's in there right now. Not, I'm not asking you actually what's in there, but compared to what's in there right now, what changes and what are the benefits of changing this to an industrial zoning?
So the benefit would be to offer, uh, additional uses, so.
Give me, give me some examples of?
Additional uses that are allowed by commercial. Additional uses that are allowed by commercial are allowed in. I can do that. So I'll scroll down to the automotive because that tends to be where the the biggest difference differences. And so currently, several of these uses are permitted with an SUP. Being auto dealership used only, auto repair and services major, auto storage and rental. Hauling services, truck dealership, truck repair. And in industrial, these are allowed by right. Warehouse uses currently require an SUP. In industrial, they'd be allowed by right. Heavy equipment's sales currently is permitted with an SUP in in commercial. And is permitted by right in industrial. A print shop, for example, is permitted by right in industrial with an SUP in commercial. Think that is a feed store, for example, is permitted with by right in industrial.
Okay, I think I think you've gone down enough of them for me. My point in this being that most of those that you described are either going to take a lot larger spaces than these current buildings have or a lot more area in the parking area, car rentals. You know, you're going to have to have a lot of cars there. Truck repairs. You're going to have trucks all over the place out there. So it sounds like when we're trying to clean it up, we're actually opening the door to have occupancies that can make it a little messy again. And I say this because if we look at all the purple around it, the light purple, that's commercial. It's consistent. When we talk about a hodgepodge, yes, if you pulled away from this, you'd see more of a hodgepodge than this represents. So we'd be adding to the hodgepodge. So it seems for consistency's sake, unless there's a really valid reason, and that would take some type of a statement about what what use you're looking to try to get in there. Because I I just, I'm just so curious about why you're going to a a much looser zoning. And what the benefit is when you have such a confined space to work in. Most of those, if you went down more, they're all going to be typically in larger properties or larger buildings. So that that confuses me as to why we have, why they're asking for this. And I haven't heard the answer yet. Likewise, you've got the dark purple across the street. So we're going to hodgepodge it over across the street to this lot. I I'm not convinced that that breaking the consistency up towards the hodgepodge is is in the best interest of the area. And I haven't heard compelling statements. And you're certainly welcome to tell me if you have something to counter what I'm addressing. What it is that's going to benefit this specific property by going to industrial. I know you can say broadly, it opens it up. Of course it does. But it opens it up to things that would never fit here. And I'm concerned you're trying to fit too much of a property.
Mayor Protem, just so you know, this isn't his application. It's his application.
I know. It sounds like I'm beating you. I apologize. But that's where I'm going to quandary over this. So I'll leave it there. And if you have any rebuttal, please. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, the public hearing is closed. If you need to ask him a question, you may ask him a question.
He heard what I said, even though I shouldn't have been saying it to the planner. So you want me to repeat anything?
I'll just take one minute. I don't. So as I said, as I said in the beginning, it's commercial right now. And from commercial, if it goes to light industrial, city is not going to lose anything. Currently, the tenants that we have there, ma'am, has gone there and it's a bunch of small individual business owners who repair cars and stuff like that. And it's very limited use that I'm able to do it because of the way that property is designed. I cannot. So therefore, it's important to be able to make it light industrial so that once these people go, I can attract some good distributor of, say, Samsung phones or somebody selling or supplying accessories to a nearby manufacturer or something. They can come and do a whole storage or they can do their distribution center here. And it will not need a lot of public transportation. A lot of people won't come there. And if possible, we can buy the land behind it. That's we are trying to do it. And see if we can get that also do light industrial, then it will become a nice space for a small business to come versus all this individual owners.
I don't mean to interrupt, but you touched on that earlier. And I'm sorry I missed that point, but thank you for elaborating on that. That makes sense. So distribution wouldn't be allowed in the current zoning?
Let me verify.
Is that wholesale center, Mr. Warren?
So there, there's a, there's a few uses. There's well, wholesale center, that that is one use that currently requires a specific use permit that would be allowed by right in industrial. The definition of wholesale center is an establishment or place of business primarily engaged in selling or distributing merchandise to retailers, to industrial, to commercial, institutional, professional business users and to other wholesalers includes an associated sample room to open to customers. So yes, to his point, if that's the particular use that he's after, then a zoning change to industrial would allow him to do that by right.
Okay, thank you. That's the last thing I'll say on it is that even if it was for distribution, you'd be lucky to get a pickup truck to back in there to to be delivering. So if there's any, once we give a special use, specific use permit for this, they get back eighteen wheelers in there. And as you can see by looking at this, there's not room but for one. So I don't know how the distribution will play out, but I'm done. Thank you. Councilman Coontz.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So sorry, can you go back to the map again? Because
Yes.
So I was mistaken on something because I just saw purple. And so I thought all the purple. But there's dark purple and there's light purple. And so off to the left, there are Main Streets. That's all industrial.
That's correct.
On the other side, where this is being requested, it's all, most of that's commercial already. So it would actually be kind of stick. Okay. So, yeah, so so I want to take back what I said as far as it fitting in with everything around it because it would not fit in with the commercial. So thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Can we have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Mr. Vera Cruz? Mr. McNabb, motion to approve and seconded by.
Again, green is to approve, must receive four votes. I'm just reinforcing since we've got six members.
I appreciate it at this point. Yeah, thank you, Coach. Okay, so with that, this is a motion to approve the request. So green is going to be to approve and red is going to be to deny. Okay, let's vote. Okay. Request is denied unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into this now. Okay. I I thought Mr. Harvey had three, but this is, this was at the very front end of the meeting and I didn't call on him. So I have to ask the attorney if he could speak on whatever he wants to speak on. I think he's going to say no, and that's my fault. Okay. Attorney, I have a question for you. The next two card, well, the next card that I have, both of these are going to be on the staff reports. So there's a person that would like to speak on both those. But what I overlooked was it was a third card by the same individual that wanted to speak during three B. And I overlooked that. Yes. Well, there's, it's under the briefing presentation. Is that correct? Yeah, it would have been under the briefing presentation.
What are you asking?
Well, there was a card to to talk during during items three B.
You don't allow people to talk during work session.
Okay. All right.
So.
If he wants to talk, he should have been asked to speak during citizen's input. Then he can speak about whatever he wants to talk about if you'll reopen citizen's input. You you adjourn the work session.
Right.
We're not going back to talk about three B.
Okay.
But in citizen's input, you can talk about whatever you want. So he can talk about three.
Okay, so I'd have to get a.
Mr. City Attorney for clarification. And I guess was this turned in before the meeting?
Yes.
And on the, when it was supposed to be turned in and and when we failed to read it?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and allow the people to turn in cards to talk and reopen citizen's input.
So moved.
Second.
Let's go ahead and vote. Let's vote on the board. Those in favor of suspending the rules. Say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Patrick Harvey.
So before I begin, I want to say, Ms. Contreras, I've sat in that position before. And I can appreciate the difficulty of trying to keep the information flowing and everything on point and that sort of thing. So I can appreciate the difficulty of that. Also, I can appreciate that we have a new person assisting you. And I suspect I could be wrong that she hasn't had much opportunity for prepare in advance. With that being said, I do have three citizen comments that I want to make. And I want to talk to you, alert you to the fact that it's going to take longer than two minutes to go through all three of them. As a matter of fact, I was thinking more in terms of maybe eight minutes for the whole lot. So I appeal to council to suspend the rules and allow me an opportunity to go through all three of these comments because it's relevant and vital information. So please.
Mr. Harvey, let me explain to the council that the cards that you turned in before the meeting, two of them were going to be covering the two items that are last on our agenda tonight. Item six A and six C. So the two pertain to that. I'm going to ask for assistance on this decision. The item on three B is what we've given you the open floor for. But let's, let's get some direction on giving these comments during six A and six C. This is something I've not experienced before. So certainly, at this point, I need, I need some help on how we can legally do this.
Here comes our attorney.
For all three?
Yeah, you can do whatever the chair wants unless someone's telling.
Well, we've already, we've already voted to suspend the rules. We need to do anything else? Add time to it?
Mayor Protem, you're running the meeting. You can do what you want. You can be challenged by your colleagues if they don't want to consent to your interpretation of how you want to run the meeting.
Okay, I'd like to get some, I have two lights on, so I'd like to hear, I'm getting some input. All right, Councilman Coontz.
So I understand why we initially decided to suspend the rules to reopen citizen comments. However, we have to keep in mind if we're going to make allowances to suspend rules, and of course, we got special circumstances. I understand that. But moving forward, we'd have to keep in mind that if it's requested of us to do this again, that we'll have to remember what we're doing tonight so that we're not showing any kind of favoritism or anything, or giving the impression of showing any kind of favoritism to anyone.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilman Cherry.
And I think we need to be mindful of time. If we say two minutes for comments, then if it's a couple of them, then it's two minutes each. Now that others, I'm like, we need to be consistent.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McNabb.
And I would agree with that assessment as well. And would ask that the comments try to be limited as much as possible or within our guidelines.
Okay, so how are we going to time this? Since there's three back to back, how are we going to time this?
There's three what?
There's three requests, citizen public comment request. Same individual on three different issues.
The rules were never meant to allow one person to monopolize the meeting. So if that were true, I can throw out cards and as long as I can throw them out, we have to give them as much as we can, how much, even if it's three out. That might be intended to rule.
Okay, Mr. Harvey, is there a particular one or two that you would like to cover in the time we're allowing you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The rest, the rest I'll put in next door tomorrow, just in case you're interested.
Okay. So is the rest of the council understanding what the attorney has told me? And we're going to proceed on and let Mr. Harvey speak for a total of two minutes.
Okay, let's go. Munis, the city's financial system can only have two fiscal years open. That's my understanding. Currently, fiscal years twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three are open in Munis. The fiscal year closes when the audit is finished. The end of the current fiscal year is September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Unless the audit is finished by September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, the Munis system will not be available for transactions for the new fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty three. It will take the auditor six weeks to complete the fiscal year twenty twenty two audit. Once the city's books are ready. However, there remain a dozen outstanding items to be completed before the fiscal year twenty twenty two books are ready for the auditor. For the fiscal year twenty twenty two audit to be finished by September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, the books will need to be ready no later than August fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Current delay increases the possibility that the auditors will be unable to provide a clean opinion. Current delay increases the possibility that the auditors will be unable to provide a clean opinion on the fiscal year 2022 audit. This will significantly damage the city's financial reputation and future debt sales. Additionally, the city has not selected an audit firm to do the audit for the current fiscal year, uh, ending September 30th, 2023. And just real quickly, it's inherently unfair for the public not to have access to the budget at the same time as council. So please correct that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we move on to our, uh, item six, staff and board reports. Interim Finance Director Dennis Baldwin.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, city council members. I'm, uh, here today to, uh, go ahead and let Denise introduce Valley View representative. We've got, uh, someone directly from the company to talk about her investment policy. We've got two tonight, and we'll have one on the next council scheduled. That's our plan. So you'll have them all caught up.
Good evening, council and Mayor Protem. I'd like to introduce to you, uh, Mr. Tim Pinion. He's from our, uh, Valley View Investments, and he will go over the December, um, 2022, uh, investment report and also the second quarter.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. We're covering the report from the quarter ending December 31st, 2022, because there was a revision made to the copy that the council received. So, um, let's see, this is just kind of highlighting a couple of things from that quarter. Uh, highlighted there is a, a change in the, the portfolio value overall at the end of 9:30. The portfolio value is a little over 79 million. It decreased slightly over the quarter at the end of the year to 78 million, 113. Uh, and there you see the, the total portfolio yield for the city was at 3.69. I believe the previous report that the council received, the portfolio yield uh, was showing a 2.49 percent, and that was understated. So actually, the city's portfolio return was, was quite a bit higher than that. It was at 3.69 percent. We'll talk about why that happened in just a minute. And then the, the quarterly, the interest earnings, those were correct. So those numbers were good. Uh, we kinda talked about the yield curve. That's, this is now old data, so we'll go and skip past that. And then this is where the, I guess, kind of the confusion came in. So when we first were did, created the report ending December 31st, during that quarter, what the city did was with their deposits at Wells Fargo, they used Wells Fargo's sweep investment option. And the purpose of that was, it gave it a, the city a significantly higher yield. So you can see, under the old model or the account structure before, they would've been getting that yield of 0.60 percent. By shifting the funds over into that investment sweep, you pick up significantly higher yield. They went to 4.04 percent. And obviously, on $27 million, that makes a significant difference in the bottom line for the city. What happened was, it's a little bit confusing. This was the first quarter where we had this split. And the way that the sweep works is it's tied directly to the DDA account. And so when you look at your balances, it'll show your available balance. In this case, if you were to look at your, your daily report on, on Wells Fargo's reporting, it would show you've got an available balance of 33 million. And so when we were collecting data from the city, they said, well, our, our DDA balance was 33 million. And it got grouped together under that first line at that 0.60 percent. And city staff still kind of learning the process on that, wasn't sure where to find that data, and they, they just didn't see it. And so as we kind of, in, in hindsight, we discovered that error. So really, the main purpose is just to come and share with the council that that information needs to be revised and has been revised to reflect the higher return that the city is earning because they're splitting the investments and putting more funds into that Wells Fargo investment sweep. Any questions on, on any of that?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Pinion. It's good to see you as always. So, so help me understand, you know, we had it listed as Wells Fargo.
Right.
Now, is, is Allspring, was it on our list?
So that was the, that was the other disclosure too. So it, it's through Wells Fargo. And so Wells Fargo split off, I think it's kind of more of a legal structuring change. So they divided that as kind of a separate company. And so it, Allspring is like a Dreyfus or a Fidelity or a Vanguard. That's kind of the label of it, but it sold through Wells Fargo, and, and so it's tied to that. And so it had typically, it historically been in the past, just it was just called a Wells Fargo sweep. This was a change that Wells Fargo instituted to more accurately reflect the legal name of it. So I'm glad you asked that, uh, Mr. Burnett. That's, that was the other thing that we wanted to disclose as well. So on the other statement, well, on the other statement, it was just grouped together. So we did two things. We separated it out as a Wells Fargo sweep, but we also identified the name of the fund, which is the Allspring Government Money Market Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that one? And I think we had one more slide from that one. And then this just is a, a chart. I think these are helpful too. It shows, well, how is the city doing compared to your benchmarks? And so, uh, what those lines are on there, the, the blue line is the city's, uh, portfolio, what your return was over the quarters. The, the other two lines are kind of what we typically use as benchmarks. So you've got the text pull, which is a, a liquid money market fund with a weighted average maturity of 60 days. And then you've got the rolling three-month T-bill. So we're looking at how did the city do in comparison to those benchmarks? And as you can see, going back to March of 2015, the city's portfolio has consistently outperformed the benchmarks. You know, it towards a peak in a rising rate environment. It can be tough to keep up with that because what you've done is you've invested out further on the yield curve typically to pick up return. Uh, but when rates start going up really quickly, sometimes those lag, those longer-term investments lag behind current market rates. As is you're seeing on the far right. So rates have gone up incredibly quickly in a very short period of time. That graph pretty well demonstrates that. So the city's portfolio is a little bit under. Let's see if we go back to here. You can kind of see the, the, the city's portfolio is at 3.69 percent. It is lagging behind those other ones just because you do have some CDs that were out for a little bit of a longer period of time. And so those are locked in, which is great when rates are falling, but when rates are rising rapidly, it's until those mature and come off, the city's portfolio return is gonna lag a little bit behind those benchmarks, but that's to be expected. The, the benefit is, as rates, you know, as you go, I guess, around 2019, when rates began to fall, because the city has some of those longer-term investments, the city's portfolio stayed higher, it stayed above those benchmark rates because you'd locked in those rates for a longer period of time. So that's the benefit. The trade-off is that during a really rapidly period of time, you're gonna be under those benchmarks for a little while. But it looks like we are about to come to a crest in interest rates. And so this is a part where it's gonna be good to start moving into some of those longer-term rates where we can to, to lock in those, these higher rates for a while. So any questions on the first quarter before we go into second quarter? Okay. So same thing here. So another shift that was made in December to March, but the, the DDA is highlighted. So the city was leaving some funds there because the thinking was, well, it helped offset bank fees. The downside was that you're only getting 60 basis points, whereas you could pick up over 4% in that sweep. So we had a discussion with city staff, and they said, hey, let's, it's nice not to have bank fees, but you're better off to pay bank fees and get a higher rate of return because 4.5 basis points is a whole lot better than 0.6 percent. So, so most, basically, all of the funds were shifted over into the Allspring investment. So the funds that are kept at Wells Fargo actually sweep into that high-yielding investment, uh, option there. So that's, that was a shift in, in strategy that was made and really, so now you've picked up significant yield on that, the $6 million that had been at that lower rate. So that was an intentional move made to pick up yield there. Uh, and then looking at the highlighted portfolio total, very typical for a city. That's kind of what we expected to see because January, February, that's when all of your property tax payments are coming in. So that's typically the, the highest quarter of the, of the year for a city, 'cause you're getting your property taxes in. Uh, so then you can see where the, the rates are still trailing a little bit behind the benchmarks. Again, we're still in a rising rate environment. Uh, the, the interest earnings, uh, are amazing in comparison to where we were a year or so ago. Uh, so 848,000 just in this quarter, 1.3, 1.3 million a year to date. So that's for two quarters. So at that rate, yeah, you're looking at a annual return around 2.6 million in interest earned on the overall portfolio. Any questions on any items on that page? And then this is a look at the yield curve, and really kind of what this tells us is it helps us make some investment decisions. What is the market telling us the interest rates are likely to do? And this is not typical, it's, it's, you've probably heard the term an inverted yield curve. Because normally, if you put an investment in the CD for a lot, for a year versus six months, you expect to get a higher rate for the year over the six months. So the longer you go, you're ti, you're, you're committing your money longer, you typically expect to get a higher rate of return, and that's normal. That's a normal yield curve. In this case, the longer you go, the lower your rate is because the market is saying, these rates are not gonna stay this high. The rates are going to become lower in the future. And right now, the, the best estimate by, I guess, the, you call it the experts that watch this, is by the end of '24. Right now, the, the Fed funds rate is between 5 and a quarter and 5 and a half percent. The expectation is by end of, of 2024, will probably be around 4%. So they're looking for about 125 to 150 basis point drop in rates. So again, there's some benefit of tying up rates now and shifting some of the portfolio, and it's already started to happen a little bit. But that's, that's one of the things we wanna look at and make a decision on, how should we invest the city's funds that you're gonna have for longer periods of time. Uh, again, just kind of a quick look here too. This is also reiterates the fact to be ready for falling rates. This goes back to 2016, so we're looking over a 17-year period, and I would direct your attention, there's a lot of color and lines on there. If you look at the green line, that's the 10-year treasury yield. The red and the blue are the shorter term. It's the six-month and the two-year rates. And so back in July or January, around 2006, you see the green line goes below those shorter-term rates. And then not too long after that, you see a pretty dramatic drop in the interest rates. Uh, and then again, in 2018, you see the, the, that 10-year line, the green line start to come down below that, and again, you have a fall in rates. And now where we are right now, again, you've got that green line pretty significantly under the red and the blue. So kind of historically, it's been an indication of rate, that rates are likely to fall. And so that's kind of what everyone is anticipating at this point. And then here's just a look at the, uh, the city's portfolio holdings as of the end of March. Uh, and so you can see we've got really good attractive rates. The top half are your li, liquid funds. Those, all of those funds in that top half, the city can get in one day with no problem. The, the investments below that are those longer-term investments that we've tied up for longer periods of time to lock in those rates. Uh, and the, the box in red, those are investments that were made during this, uh, third quarter. So you can see the city began to shift funds into some of those longer-term investments to prepare for a falling rate environment. And really, that's, I think that's the kind of a highlight of the, of the second quarter, I guess, the quarter ending June 30th, third fiscal quarter. So happy to answer any questions you guys may have about anything we covered.
Councilman Mac Burnett.
Thank you. And, and just real quick, I just wanna make sure that Allspring is authorized broker.
So they're not a broker. They're a, they're a money market fund. That's, that's a good question. Um, so there, it's, it's not really a broker. It is a fund. But yeah, let's, we can, we can check into that and make sure. That's a good point. It's like, yeah, with, with text pull as an example, you do need to authorize that, so.
Correct.
So that would be a good thing to check into.
That's what I'm wondering if we need to amend.
Yeah.
As such.
Right. So I will take that as an item to follow up on, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Item 6B, receive the fiscal 2022, 2023, second quarter investment report. Oh, we just got to.
I snuck those together, so I, I ran those together.
C, city council to receive an update on the annual comprehensive financial report, audit for fiscal year 2022. Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, council. Uh, to, we're gonna talk about the update. We obviously don't have the opinions rendered yet by the auditors, but that's forthcoming. So all I could do is just go through the slide. If you have any questions, uh, try to answer them here tonight. I've got Denise Hickman here just to, uh, help us out, just in case there's any specific questions that's beyond my knowledge. Like I said, it's, uh, fiscal year 2022. It's the annual comprehensive financial report, known as ACTVER. It's an update. Some of this information you may have already known. Uh, some of the public may learn some things tonight. Maybe there's something you might, uh, get refreshed on. But it's also important to let you know that I'm aware of it myself, given the importance of this, of this, uh, report. Some quick facts. It's obviously, the ACTVER is required, it's financial statements to be, uh, in alliance with, in compliance with the GASP, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And it, they must be audited annually by an independent auditor. That goes by your charter, but also goes by the Texas Local Government Code as well. The financial statements and auditor's opinion must be filed within, uh, 180 days. That hasn't occurred. But it has to be filed with the municipal secretary, in our case, by the last day, uh, following the fiscal year, within 180 days. Based on the state's budget cycle, and in September 30th, 2022, uh, this action should've occurred by the end of March. Again, I'm not telling you anything you already don't know. There are three main, um, parts to this ACTVER, this report. It's introductory, guides the reader through the process of what they're about to encounter in the report. The financial, it presents the basic financial information, the auditor's opinion. And it's got a very important, uh, document. I'd like to make sure when you do get it that you focus in on the management discussion and analysis, and take that in concert with the introductory. I think it gives a better picture as you go through the, the financial portion of the report. So Cisco provides additional information and includes any kind of financial trends that maybe better, uh, help explain some of the information you're reading about the government activities. Who it's used by, obviously the public, this body internally. It basically gives us the, uh, the fiscal health of the city, if you will. But I wanna really hone in on governmental entities and bond rating agencies. Uh, governmental entities, your federal grants, there are certain requirements under certain grants that require, um, audits as well. And your bond rating agencies look at this ACTVER very closely to see how well we are maintaining our financial health. Those two things moving forward, I don't have a crystal ball, so I couldn't tell you, give you specifics. But I can tell you that those are two areas we need to pay close attention to, 'cause it can affect future, uh, assuming it's a modified, or let's say it's not a clean report, it's, uh, modified with some material issues. Those are things that can come back to, um, cause certain actions from the federal government on a bond, or excuse me, on a, on a grant. Or it could be a bond rating agency looking at it and saying, you know, we're not happy with what we saw, and they may take some action. Not saying it's gonna happen, but I think those two areas, governmental entities and bond rating agencies, are something you need to pay close attention to moving forward. On July 25th, staff met with McConnell Jones and discussed what they were actually needing to, uh, get this audit behind us. They gave us a list of documents they requested. Final trial balance was one of the things, and that's one of the, the last things we're gonna be doing because some of this stuff is reconcili, uh, reconciling the books. Uh, and we're going back sometimes as much as just year 19, uh, 2021, what have you. And some of these things may, and I'm not here to assess blame, I'm just telling you the way it is, some of these things should've been done on an audit that was completed. There were some things to do, and they weren't done, from my understanding. So regardless of who, let's look at what hasn't been done and see what we can do to get it where it needs to be. Uh, staff is working diligently on that now. I'll give you a little bit more on the next slide on some of the things we're doing. The final trial balance, like I said, will be coming in toward the end. The, the property tax reconciliation, reconciliation, investment income allocation by fund, you can read through those. Sports, uh, facility fund accounts receivable aging, uh, sales tax allocation summary, on through, down to. Sports facility fund accounts receivable aging, sales tax allocation summary on through down to accrued liability support. Those are the things, the documentation they actually requested from the city of Duncanville. They also mentioned some issues, some of which included, well, the ones that it concluded was enterprise funds are currently recorded as modified accrual rather than full accrual. Enterprise funds are just like a business and they look at full accrual for that purpose. The modified is more for the governmental side of the house and that's when it's measurable and available. And so whereas the other side, the, the business side of the house, it's when that event occurs, whether you got the cash or whether it's received or spent, that's, you, you recognize it. So those, that aspect of it is something that we're working with, given the circumstances. But they had other issues as well, they were unable to locate a payment to Wells Fargo debt on the general ledger. They noted multiple employees were still carried as active at year-end that were terminated in twenty eighteen. And there's an eight hundred thousand unreconciled difference in the cash reconciliation. And the turnover in accounting department caused long turnarounds for, for questions and additional information from McConnell Jones. And that last bullet is, I'm sorry, yes, sir?
Sorry, the third bullet point there, year-end of twenty twenty-two?
The, which bullet are you in, the third one?
Noted multiple employees as active at year-end that were terminated in twenty eighteen, is that year-end twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes. The last bullet here talks about turnover in accounting department and it has been, a lot of people, there's, there's just no seniority there. That said, I think we've, we're starting to get some of that addressed rather quickly thanks to human resources. We need, we had a request made of them and they stepped up and took care of what we needed and I'll get into that in just a second. But our expectations moving forward, that list I gave you on the issues and the documents they request, requested are being addressed. It's, right now, it's a little bit all over the place as far as, some things are further along than others, but they are coming to a close. We expect by next week, all this stuff will be delivered that they're asking for, so they can move forward with the audit and continue on. That said, we had, not today, we don't, but we had accountants that were doing data entry. And while that's important for the current fiscal year, it wasn't helping us with the audit and we needed those accountants focused on the audit. So we went ahead and got with HR and to that crew's credit, we gave them, I think it was Tuesday, when they handed the memo of what we were needing. And by Thursday, we already had a confirmation they were going to start Monday. They did, we got them set up yesterday and today, things were hopping. You can just look and see things starting to move like we needed to, the accountants got where they needed to go. And the twenty twenty-three budget is, the data entry is still occurring. So that's what we needed and we're moving in the right direction there. Staff is prepared because now we've got that dedicated resources there to not only address the issues, but any further requests from McConnell Jones will be done in a timely, professional and accurate way. They're telling us, based on our conversation with them, McConnell Jones says at a minimum, they're looking to need about thirty days to complete the audit. They said it could, they could need additional information and clarification and what have you that could add to that timeframe for completion. Our goal is, because we move those resources closer to the problem, that we won't be delaying anything that, that's, that's not absolutely necessary. So I'm hoping that works fairly quick. So those are expectations moving forward, that we get it done. Our part, by first part of next week, I'm hoping to see everything's closed out on our end, given the final trial balance, that's what they need. And then let the cards fall where they may. And we get this report done, we'll get it before council, and then we'll get it to the city secretary in accordance with one forty-three, albeit late. And while there are some challenges, Munis is a good example, the, the enterprise resource planning software that we use for the organization. There are some challenges there. I've already reached out to Tyler Munis and hopefully we can get somebody online. If not, I'll give him a call again tomorrow, but because we need to get them and staff together. If we don't address some of the internal controls that are currently lacking, you'll be right back in the same boat next year. And we don't want that to happen. So we're going to go ahead and push that envelope to get them in here. Let's go there, I don't care how it happens, but we need staff and Munis to get together and work out some of these issues ASAP. And where that goes, I can't tell you right now because, yes, we've got a tentative plan, but right now, I, I need them at the table. And as soon as we get them there, we'll start making some progress, I think, in trying to make sure this doesn't reoccur. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, so that, that minimum thirty days for them to complete the audit, audit is contingent upon them receiving all those documents that they requested?
Yes, and we should have those to them next week.
Okay.
If not sooner, but I want to, there's a few things, it's all, we're like, some reports are ready but have to be reviewed. Some of them, we've got the information, but they need to be, make sure they're reconciled properly. Some of it just needs, needs the current twenty fiscal year twenty-two, twenty twenty-two information and then it can be submitted. So there's a lot of different stages in each of that thing, but I got three people dedicated to that task.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Councilman MacBurnett.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Mr. Baldwin, how, how long have you been with us now?
Today's my seventh or eighth day, full day.
Wel- welcome.
Thank you.
And, and I know you're coming in at a difficult time. You know, this staff inherited a, a time bomb. And unfortunately, council hadn't been informed very well from the past of, of where we are. And last, council, me and I referred to this as mission critical, and now I'm referring to this as mission more critical. You know, I haven't heard anything about cash reconciliation and, and, and we're on that, so, so that might be something to address as well. I too have had discussions with the auditors as the head of the, the audit committee. And ye- yes, McConnell Jones has told me that they would prioritize and try to help us. But the biggest thing I'm trying to understand is that April thirtieth, I'm sorry, April twentieth, we realized this was a problem. And, and I'm not saying this is really, but April twentieth, we realized it's a problem. And now we're at a point, and, and I heard at least from the public comments, like August fifteenth, well, I, I agree with that. However, I think it's actually quicker than that, that August eleventh is, is probably when that, because we still have to deal with, with this auditing. You know, my ultimate question is going to be, are we going to have a, are we going to have it all done? And, and what are, what are we going to have? Because everything that I'm hearing is telling me is that we're going to have a, a disclosure that, that's going to do that. The other side too, in talking to them, i- is that we're over budget on, on this as, as well in terms of the engagement. And, and that really had to do with our own inefficiencies. So I need to know where we are, you know, are we in the ocean? Are we close to the shore or are we on the shore?
Yeah.
And, and you, you brought it up, I mean, this is something and that's why I think that, that our council as well as our constituents need to know this stuff is because we are talking about doing bond projects, capital projects and that stuff and how this affects us. So yes, I mean, you know, I've, I've heard you said they've hired some staff, well, how much staff are they doing? What are they doing? And, and I don't really want to, I don't really specifically want to get into the, the weeds, but I even asked last time about what's Bay Accounting doing? It's the only one I know that's a CPA and stuff, but I don't know what they're doing. And, and this is something where, where I feel like that it's been held too close to the chest. And we're in the problem that we're in because of the previous director and their lack of disclosure. And, and I'm asking for disclosure and full disclosure because everybody needs to know what we are doing and where we are.
Okay. Well, you, you, you gave me quite a bit of stuff there to talk about, but let me go back, start with the staff we hired. Now, that is not a T-two consultant type of contract, that is a existing contract that the city already had with Apple One, I believe. So we've hired two and they are doing the entries, like I said, for twenty twenty-three, so we don't fall behind while we pull those accountants over to address the account, the audit. As far as the timing of, of the role in, that's part of my discussion for the next plus fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four. That's part of my discussions with Munis moving forward. The, regardless of, of how we got here, I think that you can only dedicate the resources, you can dedicate the time. We got it, we can't keep moving the goalpost, we've got to close out fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Good, bad or ugly, maybe all three, I don't know, but it needs to be done, what is, it is. One of the challenges we have is, is because some of this stuff is a little bit dated, so going back and trying to figure that information out, it's a little bit challenging. That said, we're going to do what we can within the time permitted, but we are, we're coming to a close on our part of it. There's not much more we're going to do, it's going to be, but what they really need is that final trial balance and that is something that is just not ready. It's pretty close and I expect by this, this time next week, we should already be waiting for them to go ahead and move forward. What you see tonight, excuse me, what you see tonight on the screen is exactly the information that they provided to us on the Tuesday meeting. And I don't have any problem at any time, come before council and give you an update if, whether it's weekly, monthly, I don't, your all's decision. I don't think this is going to be taken much longer on our part and I can give you updates as often as you would like. I, I think it's important for you all to be aware of what's going on. And some of the, and that doesn't mean the bond rating agency is going to raise or lower, I don't know what's going to happen because I don't have the opinion yet from the auditor and neither does anybody else, they don't know. But once they get it done, I think we'll have a clearer picture of what to prepare ourselves for, whether it's, maybe we had plans to issue debt and maybe there's another way to finance that internally with a little bit of restructuring of how you're operating today. So there's different ways to, to mitigate some of that damage if that's the case.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, ultimately, the, the, my ultimate thing is, we had a responsibility to do this by March thirty-first.
Yes.
Hadn't happened. Six weeks ago, we were in the same position. Okay, we're still, and, and it's like, okay. And I don't know how privy you are, but, but I mean, it's asking for the same stuff and essentially we're in the same position. That's why I'm saying we're at mission critical, we're at mission more critical. We've, we've given money to Bay, I, I mean, the bottom line is I, is I want this stuff done. And, and you know, this city is, I mean, it's, you know, it's on fire as far as I'm concerned in terms of, of, of this. And I mean, we've never had anything like this and it's, and it's it's, it's just a horrible reflection. And
I'm, may I ask, may I add something there? I know there's things that's happened in the past, some of this information they've asked for, I asked the same question when we were in the meeting. And I thought it was new stuff, but I found out that some of this stuff was still lingering. But that said, I also don't think that the resources were dedicated, I think they are now, to addressing these fat things faster and more accurately. But you don't need to look anywhere else, I mean, it's, it's my, my job to facilitate the outcome you're wanting. And I think that's where you need to focus on me and whether we're making it. And I don't have any problem sharing what I'm doing at any time. But regardless of where we were, no, we didn't make the deadline and it is a little embarrassing, not a little, it is embarrassing. On the other side of the fence, it's where we're at and it's what we decide to do moving forward that really counts. And I think if we can focus on what we've got before us and get that information to them and they can get this audit done. And if there's any lag time, any kind of drawbacks, whatever, there's only one person to look to because I'm the one that's facilitating this outcome. Staff's doing a good job, they're focused where they need to be and we got the, the hands on deck. As far as Bay, I would ask that that be something on another, just another discussion because there's more to that picture than what you've got here before you about the audit. There's other issues that have already, or other, there's another structure that's created for a reason that while it may be necessary now, it may not be in the future. But we got to work through some of the things, it can't happen overnight.
Okay, so, so I ask about cash and reconciliation, so I haven't heard anything in, in that regard yet and.
I think, I think we can answer that question for you right now.
And that's, I mean, to me, that's primary.
Okay, so on the cash reconciliations, as we had said last year, or for the last fiscal year. We had instituted the Minesphere Bank Reconciliation because Munis's bank reconciliation, when we had talked to Munis and even before I started in August, the staff who was here couldn't get the, that bank reconciliation and that ERP system to work. So, and now we are utilizing the bank reconciliation process that we push a button, we import the BAI files into the reconciliation and it massages and matches up the items that have not been recorded and we are able to record those items. We're able to look at the, the bank, we have three bank accounts, the largest of which is fifty-one pages and we're not going through that with our eyes. We're actually utilizing a mechanism by which we can, we can press it and we are able to review those bank accounts, make those transactions. And we have done those processes up until June, so.
June of?
June of twenty-three.
Of twenty-three.
Correct, we have run those, those processes.
Okay, I, I'm going to say it'd be favorable if we, if we receive that information. I mean, the whole thing is, we had a problem, okay? And the only way we're going to get through this problem is by us knowing, we're the oversight, we're the ones that are going to get the, the, the hassle on it. I don't, I have no disagreement that, that the city staff's in there working hard. I'm, I'm a big supporter of the city staff and I know that they really try and that their heart's here and, and they're trying to do it. But it's this whole thing, we waited and, and the whole point is, we could have had the mercenaries in and this taken care of a whole lot sooner if there was transparency. And, and you know, and here we are, we're kind of at the final hour and I don't know still, are we going to make it? Are we not going to make it?
Well, we're going to get.
Are we close to the shore or are we going to land?
I think we're coming in for a landing, is if you ask my personal opinion from what I've seen and what I know of. But like I said, it's, it's, it's my, my job at working with staff to get this thing behind us and I think we're making good progress. I can't tell you the importance of having those additional staff members to free up those accountants. And so that's a huge improvement. Today, if anybody walked through there and see what was going on, you'd be very thankful that we had that, that extra staff there. So we're not falling behind in twenty twenty-three, we're dealing with, we're dealing more specifically with the audit by having freed up those people. So it's going to take people, it's going to take time, but I think we're coming in for the landing and I think, now, what it's going to be, it's anyone's guess. I don't think it's going to be pretty, I'll give you my own opinion on that, but I do think we'll have it closed out fairly soon.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Gooden. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Don, Councilman Don, hit on one of my questions and it was about the reconciliation because I didn't hear it either. How are we approaching the reconciliation? Are we using Munis? Because from my understanding, Munis is not the best product to use for reconciliations. So that was answered, they were not using Munis, okay. And then, so let me start with saying thank you first of all. Thank you, what you've been able to do in the short amount of time, create structure, create a strategy on how we're going to approach. And you have identified people who will continue on with twenty twenty-three and identified staff who will work on dedicated to getting the things that we need done as far as closing out twenty twenty-two. I appreciate that. What I ask for moving What I ask for moving forward is the continued open communication and transparency. As stated by Councilman Mac Burnett, is you can tell the frustration, and rightfully so. But in order for us to get past this and to build, we have to keep communication lines open so that way we know and we're confident in supporting whatever is needed to get us past this. For me, being able to vote yes on certain things is because I wasn't clear on where we are, our current status. Seems like you're working towards being able to provide us that, and I do appreciate that. So open communication transparency is what we're asking.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comment. And it's, it's not that anyone doesn't want to get where we're wanting to be. It's just realigning a few things and kind of get more focused on the priorities, and we don't want to lose, we don't want to lose sight of twenty twenty-three, or you'll be right back where you were. I'm not a fan of Munis so far, but that doesn't mean it's a bad one. It's designed where you click on certain buttons, and you can do a trial balance, and it tells you what's not balanced. And you can go right into those areas. I mean, then you click on certain fields, and you can just print up your statements. It's designed to do what I think we all want. Whether it was set up right, I don't know. If it was set up right, and it's just been modified over the years, I don't know what the story is. But I know it's not responsive to staff, or we wouldn't be having a vendor, sending stuff to vendor to fix it, to turn it back to us so we can get it back in our system. That's not, that's wasting the money, and it's not, it's double work for everybody. And there's just lots of bad things going on in that regard. But Munis, as soon as I get a point of contact, I have already told them in my email, we're going to need to meet with staff and your representatives to start working through these issues. And that, again, it goes back to your internal controls. If they're not sound, if they're not followed, those procedures not followed, your audit's not going to look good. That's just the way it is. It's been in government since I've been around. That's how it works.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so great job, staff, continue doing the hard work. I understand we're trying to dig ourselves out of a hole, but it sounds like you have a strategy. You understand the mission critical part, and we appreciate that, thank you.
Just very quickly, I want to echo Councilwoman Gooden's remarks. Thank you for, I know you have to be putting in hours. It's not just six days as we view it by workdays. And thanks to the staff and the new people that have come on. This is catapulting us towards some kind of finality to where we, and I agree that it may not be pretty, what we see in the end, but we got to get there so we can be transparent with the public about how we got here and what we're going to do about it now. But thank you for your hard work. Mr. Mac Burnett, did you have a, okay. Okay, no other questions?
Say something. Just for your information, I want you to know that when Mr. Somal and Tia had this, they got commendations for having this set up and implemented properly, okay? It's since they're, that they were left that we have this issue.
And that's why I can't, you know, I wouldn't do it anyway, but that's why I can't tell you what stage that brought us where we are today. But I do think, I think internal controls could have been tighter, and those signals were probably there. They just weren't acted upon. Now, whether, which stage, whether that was six months prior to fiscal year close, or whether that was a year and a half, two years ago, I just don't know, but it doesn't really matter to me. It's where we're going and how to get there as soon as possible and to bring everybody back in line where we want us to be.
And I do agree with that and stuff. It's just, again, I'm going to make the same thing, the transparency on this whole thing. We're in this because we had people that weren't being transparent. They weren't telling us, they weren't being forthright, and so now we're in this. But not only do we pay for it, the public pays for it, and that's where it is. But Ms. Higman, you know, thank you, because I know you've come into a lot of that. Amy and some of, Jatoya and some of the other ones. I mean, I know you all are really trying, and I appreciate that.
And I might add, it starts with the city manager down. I do know that no one wants to be in this position, and they want out of it as soon as possible. But the cooperation I've received since I've got here, quite frankly, if I didn't get it, I would have a different attitude towards things, but really, the community is great. I've only had a week and a half to kind of assess it, but the staff is super, and I've gotten comments from other people already. I don't even know, they don't know us, but they call and let me know how our staff's acting. So that's really good news. But we're getting the support from, the governing body is the one driving this boat, and we will do what we need to do. But your city manager has actually helped out tremendously, given the resources we need to get them moved as fast as possible. So I'm thankful to have the crew on board and the governing body that's willing to support this kind of getting this thing behind us.
All right, with that, we're finished with our agenda, and we will adjourn at